Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight.
Please rise for the pledge.
I, Richard, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, in thy name, God, and thy people, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Hope everyone survived those crazy winds out there. It certainly kept our public safety officers busy. And thank you for their efforts out there in our DPW clearing a lot of trees. So just beware tonight, be safe, and try to tie down some chairs and things so nothing flies away and hurts anyone. I'd like to thank Karen Mulberg, right?
Yeah.
Joining us this evening. We got rid of Jane Brooks because, you know what? She made too many mistakes on the minutes, so we're bringing Karen.
Oh. No. Much deserved vacation for me.
She's had a much deserved vacation. I'm very jealous of her. And very big shoes to fill, Karen, I will say. We will miss Jane, but I'm sure you'll do a great job. Thank you for volunteering to be here tonight. Let's see. Anyone here for public comment? Any board member reports? Anyone?
Just note to the board that we have a scheduled lawsuit meeting for Wednesday afternoon. Nothing further to report at this time.
Thank you. The only thing I have, Mr. O'Leary couldn't make it this evening. Unexpectedly, he had a loss in his family. His mother-in-law passed away. I want my condolences on behalf of the board to him and his family. We certainly will keep them in our thoughts and prayers as they go through this challenging time. So please forgive Mr. O'Leary for not being here tonight. Believe me, if he could, he would have been here. But our sympathies go out to him and his family. I will take the minutes.
Yep.
I'll take a motion for the January 28, 2019 regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 28, 2019 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Misery. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Minipelli?
Yeah, and I'd ask the board to table those because that was the hearing that we had over the Class II dealer's license.
Yes.
So that I just wanted to get back to the clerk to add more detail in there to that particular portion. I think there was some, there could be some more detail added to that. And I'd ask the board to consider tabling that.
Both the regular and executive?
No, just the regular session.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with that?
We'll table that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January 28, 2019 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, one absent. So again, I was just kidding about Jane, by the way. I hope everyone knows that. She did a great job on the minutes, as always. Okay, that's it. Next discussion is the vote useful life of town vehicle. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. This is a routine vote that the board's being asked to take before we borrow for purchase of a wheeled loader for the DPW. This purchase was approved in the fiscal year 2019 Capital Improvement Plan at the June Town Meeting, and the financing called for it to be a 15-year borrowing period, which requires a vote of the board. I would note that in the motion that was provided, there were two things that were provided, a motion and a certificate. The certificate reads properly at 15 years. However, the motion, if you read it, it says years, but it doesn't say 15 years.
Right.
Which it should say.
Okay. Mr. Schultz, do you have that?
Yep.
Motion correction? Anything else, Mr. Gilberto?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the maximum useful light of the departmental equipment to be financed with the proceeds of the borrowings listed below authorized by the vote that the town passed June 4, 2018, Article 15, is hereby determined pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, to be as follows: The wheeled loader for $185,000 and the maximum useful light of 15 years. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which the agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General, is set forth in 740 CMR 2303, Subsection 2, Subsection B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in executive session, all in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, as amended.
Second.
A motion, a second by Mr. Misery.
940 CMR.
Any discussion there?
740.
Just clarification, I missed Minipelli. I stated I incorrectly said 740 CMR, it's 940 CMR.
You need your glasses.
I do. Okay. Thank you for catching that. He's a rookie, so he's still.
His first.
Grammar police.
Totally different regulations.
I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, a second by Mr. Misery. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, one absent. Okay, we're not at the 7:30 timeframe yet, and we're not going to look at that clock, please. I am going to use my watch.
I'll keep looking at it.
So if it's okay with the board members, I'd like to bring the Subway folks up. They're here already. And if we can address that matter before the 7:30 public hearing, that would be great. Mr. Schultz, is that okay with you? Yep. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So prior to the board's taking action to renew the license, the common victualer license for Subway, we were advised that there was a transaction that was upcoming sometime after the first of the year. So the license was renewed under the, what I'll call, previous license holder. There is an applicant here before us today to take over the franchise located currently at the Walmart on Main Street. I believe that they are here. I don't know if we want to invite them, just to make a few comments relative to their application. I believe that they're slated to have a transaction take place either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Yep.
Which is the routine day for these transactions to occur, apparently, with Subway, for what I understand is a franchise. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a franchise.
So, sir, if you want to step to the microphone through you, Mr. Chairman. Just introduce yourself, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Hi, my name is Malik Kapadia, and I'll be taking over the Subway located inside the Walmart at 72 Main Street.
Great. Does any of the board members have any questions?
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Did you, have you ever operated a franchise before?
No, this would be my first venture.
That's great. Excited. No other questions? Before we don't have any, I'll take a motion.
I believe we prepared a motion. This is for a common victualer license at this location. There is no alcoholic beverage sales ongoing or proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a common victualer license to Swornish LLC DBA Subway, 72 Main Street, to expire on December 31, 2019, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. What I'll say is just to remind you that as we get closer to the end of the year and your license is up for renewal, the town will be sending you out a package for you to fill out, to redo your new, I'd ask you to please respond as soon as you can, as soon as you get it. Don't let it prolong later into the year because we do them all at the same time, and it's very challenging.
Sure.
So we would much appreciate it here in Town Hall if you would be very responsive to that package when it comes in.
Yep, I'll make sure of that.
And we wish you the very best. Mrs.?
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. There was, there were reports from all of our inspectional departments except fire. Did they not? It looks like fire's blank. The rest of them came across fine. Obviously, it's already up and running over there. But I was, I'm assuming there'd be no issue with.
I went to the fire department, and I got the chief's signatures, so I talked to them.
Mine doesn't have any signature. Do you, does yours?
Mine, sorry.
I mean, it's already up and running, so I would assume there's not.
But he received the signatures from the chief. Mr. Gilberto.
So there is a form on page 38 of the packet to the question of whether or not there are any permits to be issued, or remaining permits to be issued, the answer was not applicable. No violations reported, and there were no limitations to be recommended on the license signed by the deputy chief, Barry Galvin, on February 14.
Oh, mine's blank.
Mine, too.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Doesn't matter. We wouldn't expect there to be any issues.
All good. Any other questions? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, one absent.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. We still have a few more minutes, so maybe we can do the special employee status?
We could save Mr. Collins from having to stay, potentially.
That would be great. So if we could turn that over to you.
Sure.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have before you this evening a request to designate the position of public health nurse as a special municipal employee. To give a little bit of history for the board and for the public, the position was held by our longtime public nurse, public nurse, public health nurse, Sue Swansburg, who retired at the end of calendar year 2018. We thank her for her service, for her time here. She's off into her retirement, and we wish her well. She was serving the town in a capacity as a contractor for the Department of Public Health over the course of that time, and that position included not only the flu clinics, which she was probably most commonly seen at, but also blood pressure screenings over at the senior center, and also a less visible but certainly very important function of monitoring infectious disease here in town through the state's electronic communication protocol. Her position was a vendor for the town, working approximately five hours per week under the budget. When we looked at what the town's needs were, the Department of, the Health Department, as the board may remember, had asked for additional hours in last year's budget, which we were not able to materialize. We're hopeful that we'll be able to expand the position so that it can provide not only the core public health function, but perhaps some other assistance in the areas of human services. But right now, that's an undetermined and unresolved question as we go through the budget process. So the struggle that I found myself in is I'm not in a position to be able to make a full recommendation as to what we would potentially increase the staffing to beat. So right now, it would continue to function as five hours. So we struggled with bringing in an outside person to work in this job on what could be a temporary basis because the number of hours that we employed them could change. It could potentially change substantially when we get to the end of the budget process. That, I say potentially because it's obviously subject to available funds and any of the other priorities that we identified. So the position was advertised as a non-benefit eligible employee at five hours per week by the Department of Human Resources, the Human Resources Director being here this evening. Ultimately, it was advertised on the town website. It was not advertised in the newspaper. It was not advertised on the municipal website, Mass. Municipal Website, which we normally reserve for department heads or other program managers. We received one applicant who is a current member of the Board of Health. That member is not compensated as a member of the Board of Health, and in addition, has volunteered her services in assisting the public health nurse when we had the situation at Kitty's over the summer, and now has been filling in on a volunteer basis since January 1st, when Ms. Swansburg retired. She's willing to continue to provide that service for us, although we would hope to be able to fairly compensate her for that work for the approximately five hours per week while we figure out the long-term in the position, long-term for the position. That can't be done lawfully without designating the position of public health nurse as a special municipal employee, and after conducting the advertising and based on the unknown of what the recommendation would be, and the opportunity for some continuity in the nursing position, we're here this evening asking for the board to consider that designation. I'll be up front. I've been up front with the health director and the public safety director and the human resources director. This is, this would be a temporary arrangement and one that I fully anticipate that we would be back asking the board to ultimately rescind when we have a long-term plan, but we don't have that answer for you right now, which is why the recommendation is before you.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think any of us think it's an ideal situation to ask somebody to take on the double duty, so to speak, but we have someone who is certainly willing and certainly capable and has proven their ability to do so with us on a volunteer basis over the past nine months or so in a variety of capacities, which is why we've made the recommendation. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the public, if the Human Resources Director or the Health Director have anything to add to that, but.
Similar to previous requests from other departments, the basis of the request is not to favor one candidate over another, but to broaden both the breadth and the depth of the pool so that the town can have as many potential candidates as possible. To date, it's been advertised for just over a month, a month and a day, and we have the one candidate. What we're competing against in a situation like this, particularly in a nursing staff issue, is you have folks who have nursing jobs that may or may not have overtime opportunities, but then they usually have PRN or as-needed positions, almost the nursing equivalent of a police detail, that are usually compensated at a much greater rate. So it's, you know, not unusual for something that is this sort of sporadic, but yet needing of a constant basis is less attractive than a traditional nursing position. It would also be subject to the same conditions. I've requested it to be under the same conditions the board has previously agreed, which is an annual review as to that status.
Mrs. Minipelli.
This nurse, the public health nurse, is appointed by the Board of Health, right?
Correct.
And so she.
Not in North Reading. It's appointed by the town administrator, which is the only reason, is the only reason this works.
That's right, okay. And then are you going to just continue to keep the position open for applications? Because this would be obviously a temporary scenario, and then are you going to just keep it open for those members of the public or residents who might want to apply for that?
Right. It was going to be, it's part-time and temporary, and then it's going to be based upon how the town administrator, public safety director, and the Health Department Director configures the position in terms of the budget. Because at some point, and we've made this as plain as we can, we're not sure what the future of the position's going to be, and as the position changed, the expectation for this or any other candidate applying. And she's sort of a candidate, but not, because she technically can't, I can't consider her. But she would be told that as the position gets more firmly in place in terms of what we're going to do and what the expectations are within the department and whether the hours increase, it would be put back out. I really wouldn't keep it open during that entire period because it's going to be for a limited period, measured in months, not years, as you get into the budget process. And then once the budget reveals how long this is going to be funded for and what sort of the scope and service of it will be, then that's the time to put it back out. And it would be open to the incumbent, should she choose to reapply for it or anyone else.
Okay.
Questions? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to designate the following position of having special municipal employee status pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A. That would be the Board of Health, public health nurse.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Misery. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
I just would like to thank the board health member we were speaking of. It's, her name is Pam Vath, and she's been on the board for a number of years and was directly involved, as I mentioned, in a response to a public health situation we had in town working with the Health Director. I want to thank her for her willingness to step up when we needed her.
And also say that Mrs. Vath is also an active member of the CIT group as well, so she's very well invested into the community as well.
Please thank her at Pearl's. I'll be happy. All right. Thank you. Thank you for staying late.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we're right on time, three minutes late for our public hearing, so I apologize, but we're moving things right along. I'm going to just read the public hearing notice for you. If you haven't, go ahead, you can do it.
Notice of public hearing. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Mass. General Laws, the public hearing will be held by the Select Board in Room 14, Town Hall 235 North Street on Monday, February 25, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the application of Golf Facilities Management, Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar for a seasonal wine and malt beverage license, license to be exercised at 149 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, located on the main level of the Golf Pro Shop with indoor and outdoor seating. The main floor is the Golf Pro Shop and a restroom of approximately 900 square foot. Outside the Pro Shop is a deck slash patio of approximately $1,500 square foot, and that's for the North Reading Select Board.
All right. The public hearing is open. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I'm going to attempt to maybe give a description of what's brought this application before us here today.
Before you do, I'm going to ask the commissioners and Chris, if you wouldn't mind coming to sit up here at the front, right where the microphone is, would be helpful. Go right ahead.
I guess, Mr. Stack, is it okay if I give the description? I know.
Please do.
Okay. And they can fill in.
Yeah. But we'll probably have some questions for him, so.
Any questions, I'll answer.
One right up front.
So I think many in the town are aware, and certainly the board members are aware, that the town has two license agreements relative to the operation of the Hillview. One is for the management of the golf course, which is held by GFMI. That's under a five-year contract with the option for five-year extension, if I have that correct. Just began this golf season, well, this past golf season, right, Chris? We're going into the second season.
I think it's a three-year contract, no?
Three years.
Three and three, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So the function facility, I believe, is a five, in a five agreement.
Correct.
Thank you.
I should note that Karen Mulberg is the administrative assistant to the Hillview Commission. She's to my left here. So one is for the golf operation, and one is for the function facility, or if you were looking at the property, the house and the function building to the right-hand side, the historic home and function facility to the right-hand side. We are in the now fourth year, I believe, of that agreement with Group One Entertainment. That agreement was signed in December of 2015 and went into effect in, I think, April of 2016. The actual start was delayed further because of ongoing renovations in the kitchen downstairs at the, at the function facility. But that license is held by Group One Entertainment, and that was a license that was granted by me, both licenses granted by me, with the recommendation of the Hillview Commission through an RFP process. In the case of the golf, one RFP process, and in the case of the function facility, we went through two RFP processes where we did not get responses, and then ultimately ended up with the response from, a proposal from Group One Entertainment. Over the past few years, I think that commissioners and/or Group One Entertainment have found there to be challenges with the operation of the pub. I guess, I think it more so came from the operator of the pub himself, to the point that Group One Entertainment notified the commission in September that they did not intend to reopen the pub for the next golf season. Is that correct, Mr. Stack? Do I have that right?
No, he was supposed to get back to me. As I said, I'm still waiting for the phone call. But he, but he closed the pub.
So in light of that, the commissioners, I think, felt that the operation of a liquor license being available was important, which is what's led to the application here today from Golf Facilities Management.
So you haven't heard from him?
No, we have.
Oh, okay.
No, I never heard from him personally, but we have.
Mr. Misery.
It was my, I thought it was my understanding that, that the agreement with Teresa's was that he was to open the lower hearing. We gave him some time to get that fixed up, which he did.
Yeah.
And he did open it, and I understand it. I don't know whether the volume was low he stopped, or he's claimed not to open it. But I think he's in violation of the agreement that was.
Well, he is. You know, you come to the crossroads where you have to make a decision. He definitely invested. He probably invested $30,000 in the facility. He did open it, probably not to the level that we thought would be conducive to golfers. It was being run as a restaurant with, you know, typical prices for beer and things like that, and the golfers weren't going there, and the townspeople weren't going there. There was no business. He went through a number of managers, and eventually he kind of put the lock on the door. And then he, then I went to the town administrator, and we started to work with him, and we came to a decision. We've got 15 outings, which are very substantial for the town, and they're all booked to eat there, and, you know, that leaves us in a quandary, that we have to service those people. We have leagues to come, and we had people trying to get into the restaurant for beer or wine, and we're losing customers to the golf. And we determined that in the best interest for us and for the town, we would honor this addendum that we did, that we had done with the prior tenant also, because he couldn't make it work either. And it was to allow the facility just to be a function facility. Upstairs is for larger functions, and the downstairs would be for bereavements, smaller showers, actually smaller weddings and things like that.
Oh, George, don't get me wrong, I'm in full support of.
Well, I know you are.
What the Hillview wants to do.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wonder if we just opened the door for him to come back and say, "Well, you've put competition in there, that's why I can't."
Ah, no, you know what? You know.
And I question to you, Michael, what has been done about the contract itself? Have any changes made?
Yeah, yeah.
So the commission deliberated over an addendum to the contract, which was provided to Group One Entertainment earlier this year. Group One Entertainment has agreed to, or I guess, proposed further modifications to that addendum and has signed that addendum. However, that addendum is to be reviewed by the commission at their March 6 meeting for a vote and signature.
Correct.
As a recommendation to me and then for my ultimate consideration. So that, that addendum.
And we, and we also have a thought process to deal with. Is the extension will be coming up, the five-year extension will be coming up in June, and we'll determine whether or not we want to keep the relationship, put it back out to bid, or just say goodbye. I mean, that's, that's our, you know, it works both ways.
Excuse me, George.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think it's important, though, we get a little bit of history out here.
Sure.
Before we go on, because you brought it up.
Sure.
And there's a couple of board members that somewhat knew, and it's, all this has come around.
Sure.
So you talk about the previous leasing for the ballroom.
Correct.
You know, he was under agreement for $40,000, but he didn't want to open the pub, which was a big issue for a lot of you, including the commissioners. It was an issue. $40,000, he didn't want to open the pub. That was the rationale we used to go out to bid twice to come up to Mr. Yever for $30,000 with the pub. So we took a $10,000 reduction, but we were getting the pub open.
Well, let me, let me.
George, if I, I have to, I'm going to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
We made a $10,000 reduction in that contract to keep that pub open. We invested $2,000, $200,000 of the Hillview Commission's money. We invested $2,000, $200,000 of the Hillview Commission's money to get the kitchen up to speed so we could open that pub.
Yes.
And now here we are, going back to the old way that we had it when we got $40,000 without the pub open, now we're getting $30,000 without the pub open.
Okay.
Something wrong here.
Well, let me explain. Actually, the prior tenant was required to run a pub, and he, in the winter of, I think, the first or second, I think it was the first year, he determined he couldn't make any money there. So, it was shut down. And the leaving of the relationship between, was Pat Lee with, and us, was a difference of philosophy on the building. Pat had this vision that the building should be something much, much more than it is, and we realized that that's an investment we could never make. So, it was a mutual potty on that part. And, yes, then we put it off a bid.
No, but the agreement was $40,000 without the pub. That's how he executed it at the end of that contract. And we said, "We don't want to go down that road anymore. We want to put it off a bid."
Correct.
We take less money to get the pub open, and we invested over $200,000.
It was actually $300,000.
$300,000.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know the exact number.
Which we didn't want to spend. We were required to spend.
And here we are, going to now make another modification. We got less money, we've just threw $200,000.
Well, let's get back to it then. What happens? You have a tenant who comes in, first of all, there were no bidders. This is my 31st year on this commission. There's been zero bidders on this property, zero.
Well, you've never put out for bid.
Of course we did.
You've never put it out for bid without saying, "No pub." We've never put it out for bid to say, "Bid on this, but we're not opening the pub."
Why would we do that, Michael?
Well, look what we've done. We went from $40,000 to $30,000, and we're still not getting what we want. So, we may, so now here we are, you're coming here to tell us, "We don't want the pub anymore."
No, no, we want the pub. You've got somebody who wants to commit to this place.
Then let's put it off a bid.
In June, they can have the contract.
Let's put it off a bid, no, you've got to give up on the pub.
But you keep saying, "Put it off the bid." We've been bidding you for 31 years, and we've got zero response.
We've never put it out for bid, we've never put it out for bid to say, "No pub." At this point, the pub is not going to happen.
But that's not feasible. It's not feasible just to have upstairs, because that doesn't draw anybody either.
No, you get the whole building, just like you're doing with Mr., what we did with Mr. Lee, now we're doing with Mr. Yever.
What would you do with the building, though? I mean, you're saying, "Just bid upstairs." That's a ballroom. What do you do?
I didn't ever say that, George, you're not listening. I'm saying, go out for bid for the whole building, downstairs and upstairs.
Well, that's what we did.
With no pub.
Well, how can you rent the building without the pub? The pub is part of the building.
George, you're not listening.
How are you putting out the bid, Michael?
George, what you've done now, if you, you've now established a contract that puts out the whole building for $30,000, including the pub, but we don't open it to the public. That's what you have now, that's what you're coming in tonight for. Yes?
No, no.
Michael.
The tenant has determined he's not going to run a pub.
Correct. But you're going to still let him use the pub.
But he's using it as a function facility.
That's right.
Of which we get a percentage, we get a percentage of the downstairs, the upstairs, we get the utilities paid for, and we get a commission, and the building's lit.
I understand.
Our job was to pull the plug, you make it dock, what do you do?
I think we're actually in adamant agreement. That's what I'm trying to get at, George. I don't think you're listening.
I'm listening, because...
No, you're not listening, because what you're saying is exactly what I'm saying. Now, what you're doing is you're modifying his contract to execute in exactly that way. What I'm saying is, we've never gone out to bid an RFP.
Are you aware that we adjusted the prior tenant's rent?
Again.
Michael, are you aware of that?
George, you're not listening. I think we're in adamant agreement here. All I'm saying is, we should have gone out with an RFP to bid it the exact way you want to execute it.
We did, nobody bid.
No, you included the pub to be operated. And all the RFPs that went out is execute the pub, open to the public.
Okay, I'm lost as to, maybe you could clarify.
Michael.
If you put it out to bid the building, what are you putting out to bid?
The downstairs for functions and the upstairs for functions.
Okay.
No pub, open to the public.
Okay.
On a regular basis.
Yeah, okay.
That's what you're proposing tonight, for $10,000 less than the last tenant.
I'm not sure about that, Michael. I think you have to understand that we adjusted rents along the way.
So, Michael, if we go back through history, one of the reasons why the Hillview Commission had to go out for the lease for both upstairs and downstairs was that the kitchen downstairs was inadequate to operate as a luncheon restaurant and a pub, right? So, that's been fixed.
Yep.
So, if Mr. Yever doesn't, can't operate that, it's possible today to go out, when then his contract ends, to go out for two separate bids. I think that's what you're trying to say.
No, I'm not.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, I'm giving up on the pub, because clearly, nobody can make it work. We've heard the commissioners come here and tell us, "Every time we try it, it doesn't work." I get it, and I understand it, but what we've never done is go out for bid to someone and say, "You can have the whole building now, downstairs and upstairs, as function facilities, no pub access for the public." We don't know how much money we'd get. We have no idea, because that's the reason why we've had this reduction in revenue for that ballroom, because we keep saying, we go out for bid in the RFP, saying, "You have to open up the pub to the public during the golf season." And that's been the reason why people say, "Well, I'll do it, but I'm only going to pay the town this." Low money. Yes, Mr. Schultz?
A question regarding the pub doesn't work, so I'm not necessarily, it looks that way, but I'm not, I'm not sold that the best of efforts was made to make the pub work. Just the way I could put it. Wasn't Mr. Yever required to open that pub up when golf season started?
Yes, yeah.
And last year, I don't think he opened it up until end of June.
No.
So, I mean, how can he sit there with a straight face and say, "I couldn't make this work," when the three, probably the busiest months of the year, when golf season opens, and he wasn't even open, sir?
Because, because, he did, that's what he says. I can't do it. You know, when we took the property a long time ago...
Well, you've got to try to be able to say you can't do it.
Well, when we took the property a long time ago, and we brought in our consultants, it was a big risk we took with the town. They said it would take five years to establish a business. Now, that was a country club. So, the golf was a given, that was a given. People were going to golf. But the facility itself, they said, would take five years for somebody to develop that. So, when the prior tenant came in, Mr. Yever came in, they didn't see that. They thought it was just going to happen overnight, and in two years, both basically closed down.
Well, it's not going to happen when they're closed the first three months of the season.
Wow.
And I don't know why he's not out there with grills on that patio overlooking the driving rates. You've got every golfer coming off the 18th hole. He's made no effort to make that work.
Well, you know, that's what we tell them, but you know what?
Oh.
What are you going to do? So, we're going to make a decision. Do we make a dock? Or do we honor the contracts we have with the 15 outings coming in during the year? And in June, when the renewal comes up, we either extend it, or we say no. Then we face that barrier when we come to it, you know?
The contract's up this June?
The extension comes up, where we have to notify.
Because he hasn't entered a contract by opening during golf season.
No, no.
I mean, you know, it's a mini-paddock.
It seems, it already seems like, though, that you've told him that, you've discussed that with him, and that that's the response back.
All right, I'll be very blunt. Come up one day, the pub's closed.
Yes.
It's closed.
Yeah.
The new signs are out there, we didn't know they were going up. They're here.
Can I ask you this?
It's in the contract, he has to do everything through us.
Yeah.
Nothing's been done through us. Okay, so, we come to a crossroad, and that's where we made this decision to take this to this extent we're going to go, until we come to the renewal time, when we determine, probably to put it back out to bid.
Has there been any talk with him about just breaking the contract mutually at this point, because it sounds like...
Well, I keep waiting for the phone call, to be honest with you. Yeah, it's a nine months.
November 2020, right? Is that when it's...
Oh, it's...
Yeah, but, but...
Not this June?
But, but you know what?
You have to give it in advance.
This year, Chuck, this year.
Sorry, Mr. Gobert.
Just on the terms, so the contract was a five-year term, from April 1, 2016, to March 31, 2021, with the renewal needing to be exercised by June 2020.
Right, June 2020.
Okay, June 2020.
That's what I said. So, let's be realistic, you know? We got a facility that we have a responsibility to the town, at least to honor what we have contracted for. Now, Mr. Yever can do that. Where do we go from there? You know, where do you go from there?
Ms. Steve?
Yeah.
Can I just ask, just, because we're here on this, I just want to understand, so, you, to me, I don't golf, and I don't go to the pub to drink either, but let's just say that was available and that was open, and you are trying to sort of generate a brand here, right? Wouldn't that help doing that? Wouldn't that help driving business and increase the revenues to have a pub open? You go in, you get a meal and a drink, wouldn't that help?
Well, sure it was.
So, isn't that what you want?
We had a tenant for 26 years, we never had a problem with. 26 years.
I know, well, that's done, and that's gone.
Yeah, but when he left.
But you want the pub to be open to the public, right?
But the problem is...
But how do they serve food there now? How did he serve food there? Through the kitchen that was renovated?
Yeah, sure, he does his...
So, is this applicant going to be allowed? I don't understand how they're going to mix and match.
No, it's a whole different animal.
Why, though?
Leave the building alone.
How is he going to make the pub a go of it if he doesn't have a kitchen?
He doesn't have a pub, it's not the pub.
He's not asking for a pub.
No, he's not. The pub is gone. The pub is gone. Mr. Yever will do his thing until we determine in June what we're going to do, unless Mr. Yever decides that he's just going to put a lock on the door one day and leave, because that's what he did with the pub. He just wanted it.
I operate a small snack bar within the pro shop building, which is a smaller building.
All right, so this isn't even the pub?
No.
This is something...
Chris is here.
And I've had this license back in 2014, 2015, and it was fairly successful. Small operation, but it kept the golfers happy. They had a beer or two on the deck, did the scorecard, and they went home. It's not going to turn into a tavern-type of thing, or there's no really seating available besides a picnic table. So, I think my main goal is to generate, keep the golfers happy, bring more golfers. And we've lost golfers over having no place to go to have a cold beer after the round of golf.
Would they normally go to the pub for that, or would they go to the...
Well, if the pub was viable, and it was okay, but what we want to avoid also are the pickup trucks here and here, with beach chairs here, and they've got 230 six-pack, 230 cases of beer, and this guy has 30, and they're having a great old time in the parking lot. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
Chris, where are you going to sort, like, where are you buying hot dog at the bottom there?
No, so it'll be in the golf shop. So, last time, we applied for this, 2014, it came to the board, and we all decided it was going to be a safer situation to sell it from the golf shop rather than the snack bar, because the snack bar really wasn't controllable from the window. The ABC Board and the selectmen felt that coming out of the golf shop with a fenced-in patio, only one way in, one way out, much more controllable. I tip-trained all the staff at the counter, and, you know, there's no one really under 18 that's working that counter, so it just made things more efficient.
Don't you have that big tent there?
Yeah, we put the tent up for vegetation for outings. Sometimes people sit up there and get out of the sun. And I basically just had a refrigerator in the golf shop, and you came in, grabbed a beer, and you paid for it at the pro shop, and you had it on the deck, and...
Except this year...
And keep in mind, that was originally established because the pub wasn't open, right? And the only reason why they're doing it is because there's no pub.
Right.
We...
If I could interject here, okay? Because I know we have to move this a little bit forward. All I'm saying is that he's requesting a change, because he doesn't want to do something. And I get the sense that you don't like it, but you don't feel like you have a choice what he's supposed to do. I get it, we all have to make changes here. And my point that I said earlier is that, you know, you had mentioned something about we get a percentage of the revenues, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Is that after we meet a certain factor?
No, 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 we get a percentage...
No matter what?
And it's the gross, not the net.
The gross, no matter, not every dollar we get. What's that percentage?
I forget the percent.
3%.
I thought you meant money-wise.
3%.
Plus, we get the rent.
How much is that generated?
It varies month to month.
Yeah.
Well, what do you think, in an annual basis? You've been doing this now. What's it generated on annual, what is that, 3% in, what is it generated for?
Usually, a couple of grand a month, but when, like, with your month, it can be less.
Yeah, it used to be almost, with Burton, it used to be like, it could be as much as $100,000 in a good year.
Under this existing contract, it's probably somewhere around 20 grand a year?
No.
No.
10 grand a year?
No, up to 40.
40 grand?
Yeah, it's higher.
Plus the 30.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this contract is more lucrative than the previous one?
No.
Not really.
Not really, no.
Why not?
No.
Because he originally started at a lower rate than the original.
Well, part of the problem, I'll get back to it again, because I really like people to understand, nobody is bidding. We have put this out to bid for 31 years.
But, George, we've never put out the bid without the pub. We've never done it. We should put it out for bid. What we should do is come to an agreement, or I'd like the commissioners to think about it, is sit back and say, "He wants a change." And right now, we're kind of locked in until 2020, or 2021, actually, right?
Discussion's open in 2020.
The extension is, he'll be notified in 2020.
Correct. Why can't we come to a mutual agreement to say, "Let's go out for bid earlier"? If he wants to make a modification, make a modification in this contract, allow us to go out for bid to the public and say, "Without the pub." And let's see what we get, because you may get better bids now. When someone knows that they don't have to open up that pub anymore to the public, and we have a kitchen downstairs that we've invested over 200, or almost $300,000 in, that's going to be accessible to them to run functions at that lower level now, not open it to the public, maybe we can get a better deal for the Hillview Commission. And maybe there's some way to work out something to create that patio, to work something out for Chris with the next operators. Because I know you make it work, Chris. And I know, and I don't want to speak for you, but I also remember when you went through this the last time, is this is an inconvenience for you, not a convenience. It's an inconvenience. And I want the community to know that Mr. Carter is here because he wants to make this work. This is a small chunk in how things operate in the golf industry, and if you don't have a beverage option for people, they'll go play other places. I'm a golfer. And that's, I mean, it's a big part of the process. So, we need to help you. That's all I'm saying here. And this is not helping, guys. It's not. And I'm not happy with the situation. And I know you're not either. So, why don't we mutually agree to have another discussion? Let's not vote on anything tonight. I think we need to go back and have another discussion about, have we ever gone out in an RFP for the ballroom and the downstairs with no pub access to the public?
Can I just ask you a question, though? I know what you're saying, but can't you go out to bid on someone operating the pub and give them access to the brand-new kitchen that we invested money in? Why can't you do it that way?
That one, I would have to leave. I'm not smart enough to answer that one.
You would probably get bidders to run a pub at a golf course that already has clientele.
The problem you have is, it's twofold. You know, you have the upstairs, which is the big ballroom, and you have the downstairs, and you have one liquor license. One liquor license.
It's a big problem.
It has been spoken to us about having two. I've always been opposed to that, to be honest, because you never know which function the person was at, who got served and had an issue. So...
That's going to be the challenge.
This will be, you know, it's, it's probably been the worst part of this whole taking in 1988, has been that building. It's just, there's no interest. Plus, the roof still leaks.
I would say, leave it alone till we come to the extension, which is another year, all right? Let us move forward with what we want to do. It's all the interests of the town, what we're trying to do. Go to the extension, and then you want to make a modification. Can we come down?
I agree with Michael, though. We know he's already said no, and it seems like he's whittling down his obligations[1494.41] I, I agree with Michael, though. Where, we, we know he's already said no, and it seems like he's whittling down his obligations as it is. So, move, move on and see who can come in when that's done. I know you can't because you're under a contract.
No, it isn't that. It's the bidding. It's the bidding. You better, you better realize, he came in at the twelfth hour to lease that place. There was nobody. We had no, we were going to put the lock on the door.
He came in on a phone call. I got a ten o'clock at night. Let's be honest, all right? That he was interested. Other than that, we, we were going dark. Simple as that. Can't say it any other way.
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, one, I know, obviously, it's one of the tenants. What, perfectly well, when you go open up for the season?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
You need Bill Serbier to your, your golfers.
Correct.
Secondarily to whatever we do with the current tenant, you need to have your license from March fifteenth.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we should vote on this license.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you've got to be ready for your season. You know, maybe it's April first because it snows, who knows? But you've got to be ready to go. And I don't think it's fair to you to lose golfers because our other tenant's not doing what he contractually obligated to do. That's not fair to you. That's not fair to anybody. I mean, just because, why should you suffer because he doesn't feel like he has to follow terms of his contract? Whereas last year, he didn't open till June, when he should have been open, whatever, when you guys opened.
April first.
I, in my opinion, I think he needs to be voted on tonight for that reason.
Mr. Maseri?
I don't need to say anything. He said it all.
So, only thing I'm, I'm suggesting is that we kind of do both. We, we make this modification. We'll do what you were here for the request on. But you should go back to Mr. Yever and say, let's change the extension. Let's bring it further forward. And let's restructure the RFP to go out for an RFP that doesn't include opening the pub to the public. And I think, because we've never done it before. And I know you keep saying, we didn't get anyone to bid because the RFP said, we want to open the pub to the public. And since we're all giving up on it...
We, we, we don't have to go to Mr. Yever to put it out to bid. You know, we don't have to deal with him at all.
Well, you do, because you can't do it until this extension is...
Right, that's in June.
But we agree on tonight. So, you're in business with him until two thousand and twenty-one.
Right.
And...
Go ahead.
I need more information before we...
Sure.
Okay.
So, you just said you're, you, you've always been opposed to do two different licenses.
Correct.
Doesn't this make two different licenses, one for him and one for...
No, they're separate now. You, you won't have a function upstairs and downstairs having two separate licenses, two separate liquor licenses.
He's in a different building.
This is a different facility. This is strictly, this, this will be, Chris will, people will get a hot dog, come upstairs, get a beer, sit on the deck.
He's in that building that looks like a big shed.
And wine, I hope, for the ladies.
Okay.
Wine for the ladies.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but that means there's two, I know it's a separate building, but it's all on the same premises. There will be two separate liquor licenses.
We had it this way before, when Mr. Lee...
And this is a seasonal license now, remember?
Yeah.
This is only for the golf season.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, we've done these for Thompson, I think.
Yeah, where we go for, for Rever, for Thompson.
Okay, all right. So, so you will serve food. You're not just serving, come and get the, get your beer in the refrigerator. Put your money in the jar. You're serving food?
Snack bar is a lower level, yes. The lower level is cold sandwiches and some hot dogs. And I also have snacks available in the golf shop, peanuts, chips, crackers.
Like what, though, out of a vending machine? Or do, how do you make the snack? How do you make the sandwiches? You have someone there? I don't understand.
So, down below, I have a small kitchenette.
Okay, all right.
So, it's a little takeout window. You walk up to the window, the golf comes up.
Okay, all right.
And I'm inspected by Mr. Bracy, the health department. We have chicken salad that's, that's pre-made, off-site, brought in and made into sandwiches. And I have a hot dog machine, steamed hot dogs. And the snacks are just, you know, lace chips and Doritos and peanuts and...
But you're finding that they want to have a sandwich and a drink before they leave.
Quickly at the turn. It's more so like, you know, they have that sandwich at the turn, and when they come upstairs after or prior to their round of golf, they have a beer on the deck or inside.
Okay.
When I'm scoring, a lot of times I'm scoring the event, or they keep adding up the scores. I personally, you know, you know, I, I kind of, back in two thousand and fifteen, didn't really, didn't have much choice. But I, I prefer to have the pub. I, I think it might bring more people in. But, you know, this gentleman did put a lot of money into the investment. It was a nice-looking pub. And unfortunately, it didn't, it didn't work out, you know, for, for, for other reasons that we all could probably discuss and have different ideas on.
So, Michael, we're not here tonight in regards to anything to do with the, the agreement, the contract?
That's correct.
So...
Simply on a seasonal basis.
So, the commission, the Hillview Commissioners have the unilateral right to make the modification of that contract?
No. They make a recommendation to me, and I sign the contract, similar to any contract that the town has with a vendor or licensee.
I remember you reviewed it with us, with, with the, the whole package bid that we're talking about.
Can I clarify something? The Hillview has never had unilateral ability to ever do anything. We're just volunteers who, who have always just done things, taken it to the town administrator, and that's where it goes. We, we, we don't make decisions.
So, what I'm saying is that, we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll vote to give Mr. Carter what he needs to open and have some services here in March. I'll support that. But I still think that we need to have another conversation about this existing contract. Have you made any modifications and signed it yet?
No. So, Mr., so I, I think I was starting to explain it, but didn't get to, to finish. The, the addendum that, that is up for discussion has been executed by Group One Entertainment. The Hillview Commission is slated to consider it at a meeting next Wednesday. They've heard your input. I've heard your input. They have not signed it. I have not signed it. I should say, they have not voted on it. I have not signed it. Excuse me. And that addendum would effectively remove the requirement that Group One Entertainment have to operate a pub and allow for the issuance of this license to GFMI. So, that's what that addendum would do. It is not in effect at this point in time.
I, I don't even understand that. We're talking about, now we're talking back to the pub. I don't, I don't understand why we would...
So...
They're not talking about the pub. They're talking about a license somewhere else. So, we're not, why would we give him a pass on something that he's required to do? You just explained to me it's separate.
Yeah.
Give, give him the license separately, and now we're back to the pub. We're back to this.
We can't have two liquor licenses doing the same.
I just asked that, and you said it's two separate ones, ones for the functions and ones for the separate...
Mr. Gilbert.
I just asked you that.
They're fifty yards apart, though, is why it's...
So, there, there, there is an exclusivity.
Is this license for the pub?
No.
No, it is not.
Then why are they giving him an addendum saying, don't operate the pub? That makes no sense.
Because I believe that our agreement with Group One does not allow for the issuance of another license on the property.
But they're not operating the license, and they've locked the door and said, we're not going to.
But it's in the contract.
They are operating, using a liquor license in the function hall upstairs, mostly for community events.
Next month, he could come down and open up if we don't have this agenda.
He can come down and...
Theoretically, come back downstairs and open the pub.
And we want him to. That's wonderful. We don't want him to, okay.
He's not doing the right thing.
No, no, you know, we're trying to do, we're, we're trying to do the right thing for this golf season, where we have contractual obligations to the tune probably of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town and greens fees.
Yep.
And those people have contracts with, with Chris for the golf and with Mr. Yever to have food there. So, he's going to service that, and, and what happens after that, we will, as a commission, brainstorm it. We, we're not happy, but again, you make a decision based on, on a rational decision. Close it, make a dock, or do the best you can for this season, and then go from there.
I would like a follow-up on what you decide on before you make any decisions of your mind. We do have another public hearing at eight o'clock, so if we, if it's okay with the board members, I'd like to take the motion and move on unless they have some burning.
Can we wait until after May eighth?
For the, for the pub?
For what?
For the, for the... For the pro shop?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a seasonal wine and malt beverage license for Golf Facilities Management, Inc., DBA, Hillview Snack Bar. One forty-nine North Street to expire December thirty-nine, excuse me, December thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have a second?
I'll second, second it.
All right, I have a second, but Mrs. Minipelli...
And I know you get it, but, so, I'm, I'm still not understanding this. So, we're going to approve this without an addendum in place, which you just told me, we can't do this. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm missing something here. I'm missing something. I already seconded it.
She already said it. But what Mrs. Minipelli's saying is she's right.
No, no, I'm not withdrawing, but...
She's right. Once we approve this tonight, we're actually in violation of the existing contract.
Which he's already in violation of, so we're worried about violating something when he's locked the door and...
Officially, correct.
Let's, let's step back.
We all agree that we've got to fix the contract.
Yeah, but let's, let's step back. The, Mr. Yever, in September, a meeting with Mr. Gobero and myself, said he would determine and let me know in the future what his plans were for this coming season, okay? And one day, I went up there and I found out what his plans were. The door was locked.
How did you find, did you talk to Mr. Yever?
No, the door was locked. And I went upstairs and spoke to the woman who works upstairs for him, and she didn't know it had been locked for two weeks. So, they didn't know that the pub was locked. So, then we had to come to a determination, we have all these responsibilities. Now, you can get into a real contest. We don't have money to fight things, so we'd, we'd never do that. But at the same time, we had to make a determination, a rational determination. Do we let a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the fees go that would go into the enterprise? Or do we work something out where the pub is now just for functions, and we have Mr. Carter to do his thing, and then we determine down the road, which we will, how we go?
Mr. Stack, I'm sorry, but I don't think any of us are disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
Our question is, if we approve this right now, are, is the town in violation of this contract?
Well, how would that be? We're doing addendums to the contract.
Well, it's not signed, and it's not executed.
And he's not opening it.
You see what I'm saying? Do you have to get this addendum completed before we approve this? Because he could turn around and...
In the contract, it says that we can't do what we're doing.
That's right.
Because it's the pro shop. That's what you just said, but...
So, I'm asking, has he told you affirmatively, has he told you affirmatively that he's not opening up for this coming golf season? Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Yever does not communicate with me. He communicates with Mr. Gilbert.
We have a letter.
Really?
We have a letter from him indicating he's not opening this season.
Okay, okay. All I'm asking of Mr. Gilbert, all I'm asking...
Do we not, George? I mean, I...
No, you can, because it's not, it's not the...
Through the chair. I'm asking the question.
It's not the pub.
I have a motion and a second here. I have a motion with a second. If we approve this motion right now, under the existing contract that you have with Group One, will we be in violation of that clause in there that's, technically, technically, would we be in violation?
He signed it, didn't he?
He, so he has signed an addendum. We have not signed it.
Okay.
He signed it.
That's fine.
He, he is, he has...
You uncomfortable with us approving this tonight? With, while the town having it signed?
So, he has signed an addendum that would resolve any legal issue relative to this license being issued. However, we, meaning myself and the commissioner, are now hearing some guidance that might say that that addendum might not meet our needs on the town side. So, that's really where we need to figure things out. Because if we're not prepared to sign that agreement, then, then we have an issue.
Well, just think that you need to sit back and think about this. Now, you're in business with this person that keeps telling you what to do. There is not a mutual agreement anymore. And he's doing what he wants to do, and now you have to be in business with him until two thousand and twenty-one. All I'm saying is, if you're going to make this amendment, then make the amendment to move that date forward so it happens, the expiration happens earlier, so you can go out for bid, and maybe he'll rebid on it, and you can do the RFP without the pub being there, since we're all giving up on it. When we approve this tonight, in the next two seconds, when we approve this thing, we've officially given up on offering a pub in our Hillview facilities.
I think, you're speaking...
Forever.
I just think personally, after thirty-one years on the commission, that we, we try to make decisions based on what's reality and best for the town. That's why the Hillview...
I don't think anyone's questioned that.
That's why the Hillview Commission has provided seventeen million dollars in services such as Ipsos Hill Park, the turf field, a lot of those, because we make good business decisions. This is a business decision. I, I don't want to get into personality things because it doesn't go anywhere. We need...
Mr. Stack, I'm sorry.
We need the adjustment that Mr. Yever has provided, that we, we will sign. We're all in agreement. That it's going to happen, and we need Mr. Carter to be able to go and on March fifteenth, be up and running for golfers.
Okay. And none of us here are debating with you on this. So, I'm, I'm not so sure, you're clear on what we're trying to say here. All I'm saying is, if you're making modifications, and you're making a modification that benefits him, okay?
No, it doesn't benefit him. It benefits us. Doesn't benefit, how does it benefit him? It doesn't benefit him.
Having the pub open would be significantly better for the community and for Mr. Carter. Agree or disagree?
No. Listen, I ate a pub. I'm probably the only person in town that ate a pub. There was nobody there.
Operating.
Okay.
He could kill you, but he'll...
So, with ours not being consistent quality...
I'm sorry, I'm cutting you short. I am under the gun a little bit.
Sure, no problem.
So, I apologize for my promptness here. But my point I'm trying to make to you is that we, once we vote on this, and I think I have an idea where this vote's going to go, we've now officially have given up on opening the pub to the public ever again. It's over forever.
Not necessarily if another vendor comes in.
Because what I'm suggesting is, is that we go out for bid, a new RFP, never open up that pub again, because we know it can't work. It'd be the definition of insanity.
No, I understand from the explanation, what we can't do is, is the function facility and the, and the pub, but this is different. But that addendum is going to let us go out to bid on the pub and not prohibit a competitor. But I also want to say, you said it yourself, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of commitments. If this kind of behavior contrary to the contract is impacting that revenue for the town, that, that party is the one that should be concerned about what could happen to him. And I, I applaud you for all the efforts that you've made, and I, I know the commission's a, is a, is a volunteer board. We see the same people volunteering for everything here over and over and over again. And that cannot be easy, working with different personalities, and that's what it is.
Well, I mean, you can get out, you know, you can...
But that, that addendum should allow us to put the pub out to bid and perhaps be a vendor.
But why would we? We know it doesn't work. We've done it. This will be the fourth time. If we do it again, it'll be the fourth time.
No, I don't think that's what they're saying.
It worked very well for the first tenant. We made a lot of money for twenty-six years of that pub.
What I would say, though, it is a little bit different. I agree with you that maybe there is a place that's not going to work, but this will be the first time I put it out for bid with a new, modern kitchen.
Well, we can talk about that. We can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
There's a motion and a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Post, unanimous, one opposite. Thank you.
Michael, I thank you for all your help over the years with the Hillview.
Thank you.
And Bob?
We can't discuss that.
Mr. Masari?
You can probably do that.
I'd like to thank Mr. Masari, who was on the board for twelve years with me, I think, at Hillview. What are we going to do without seeing your name in the paper now, Bob?
All right. We have a public hearing at eight o'clock, so I apologize for running about seventeen minutes late.
Thanks.
Mr., thank you. Chris, best of luck.
Appreciate it.
And the course looked so wonderful last year, honestly. It was plush, and I hope more people come out and experience it. It's great.
Thank you very much.
Godspeed. Good luck.
Um, Mr. Schultz, do you have the public hearing notice?
Um, I do.
Page forty-four, if you have a packet.
Public notice, the select board shall be considering for sale the following parcels of town-owned land on Monday, February twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen, at eight P.M. In room fourteen of the town hall, two thirty-five North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts. Any parties interested in the potential sale and subsequent private ownership of this parcel should plan on attending. First one is map eight, parcel one ninety-three. It's five Audubon Road, about fifteen hundred square foot. The second one is map eight, parcel two oh nine, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-six square feet. That's eight Audubon Road. Next is map eight, parcel one forty-four. That's two hundred and seventy thousand, seventy-two square feet. And that's eight boroughs, eighty-six boroughs road, excuse me. Next one is map nine, parcel fifty-four, seventy-seven fifty square feet. That's fifty-five Old Andover Road. Next is map nine, parcel fifty-eight, twenty-five hundred square feet, one Bear Road. The last one is map seventy-eight, parcel seventeen, seventy-one hundred square feet. That's twenty-three Riverside Drive.
Okay. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll start, I guess, right off the bat with maybe the bad news, especially for the residents who are here. So, when we go through this public hearing process, we're required to notify a, a number of town departments, boards, and commissions that we're considering, that the board is considering selling land. And while nearly all of those notified boards, departments, and commissions have been annually given a listing of all town-owned land and provided an opportunity to comment on what they think about keeping or selling that land, when they received this particular notice, a number of them asked for additional time to respond back to the board, one of which was the Land Utilization Committee. The school committee, I know as well, was going to review this at their meeting this evening. So, we're recommending that the board actually continue this hearing until their next, excuse me, two meetings from now, on March eighteenth. Unfortunately, the best way for us to communicate that was through the communicate, through the discussion here. It's not our decision, not my decision, it's the board's decision, but we, we do recommend to the board continuing the, the hearing, mostly because we're expecting there to be additional input, particularly from the Land Utilization Committee regarding these parcels. You can see that we had a number of parcels in the hearing notice, and that is an accumulation of interest over the past twelve months or so, and a number of you have been very patient, waited a long time. We did conduct a, an informal review involving the departments here in town, but a number of committees asked for some additional time. So, therefore, the motion that you see in, with the rest of the motions is for the continuation. For the board's information, you should see some marked-up versions of the actual votes on these parcels. Some of them reflect some feedback from conversations that we've already had. Some of you may be familiar that there's a standard vote that the board takes, where there's a few conditions that we put on, depending upon the board's intentions. And so, we've given some guidance to the board, at least informally, for them to consider. So, that's sort of where things stand, and I'm, I'm sorry for those of you who came out this evening, but I, and again, based on the, the request for additional time, I feel an obligation to ask the board to consider taking that time to allow those committees to respond.
Mr. Maseri?
Based on previous discussions about selling town-owned land, we took into consideration people that had lots, needed extra space, and that we're not selling any lots necessarily for development. Do these fit those basic requirements?
So, I, I don't, I, I believe in all of them, either the, the land is not able to be built on or we're recommending that it not be built on here. I'm not aware that any of the petitioners are looking to develop land. If you are, please nod your head affirmatively. But I don't think anyone who's interested is.
So, they're interested in expanding their lots for acoustic systems or just general living area or whatever?
I believe generally, that's the purpose of their requests, yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Minipelli?
I had a question, too. I know that in some of these, we received a letter from the resident asking about the parcel next door. Some, some of these are in between a butters. Do we have any obligation to notify the other side, the resident on the other side who might be interested? Because it, a lot of these seem to just peculiar, have a peculiar value only to those one or two that are on either side of it.
So, we would be going, I think, in the case of all of these parcels with an auction, so it would go to the highest, the highest bidder. Often, it's only one bidder who might be interested, but in that, that situation you just described, Ms. Minipelli, that, that, that would be an instance where somebody else may come in and wish to, to do that. And you may remember, a, a year or so ago, we had two property owners abutting a property that were both interested in it.
Up by the high school.
Correct, yes. Mr. Maseri?
Michael, even though we cannot necessarily make, take a vote tonight, it might be worthwhile, since we have guests here.
Oh, yeah, I was going to, I was going to say that. I was going, even though you would like to have the continuation on the March eighteenth, we do have residents here tonight. I'd like to hear from them. But I also want to make sure we're very clear about how the process goes in that when we get these parcels to us, we, we take them to a vote, there's five options that we select from.
Correct.
And they all revolve around the inability now to take this property, add it to your existing property, and then subdivide it into two lots. You will not be able to do any of those functions when we sell this property to you. What we try to encourage here is, you acquire the property so you can expand your footprint, so maybe you can put a garage, or maybe you could add a shed, or put a pool in an area where you weren't able to do before because you didn't have the footage or the frontage or, or things like that. That's what we want to see, the benefit of this property. And how we try to do it financially is, whatever it costs the town to sell you this property is how, is the cost that we sell this property at typically, but I know we do go out to bid, but that's typically what we do. It's not a moneymaker. We're not here to make money off of, for the, you know, take advantage of it, I should say. We want to cover our cost, and we want to be able to offer a benefit to the butters where we have this town-owned property, because it does the, the town no good to have this property, but not on the tax books. That's the, so it's a, it's a win-win. That's what we're trying to create here this evening. So, with that said, what I'd like to do is, if you are interested in having a discussion or give some feedback to the board, if you're interested in a particular property or have questions, go to the mic, identify yourself, questions, go to the mic, identify yourself, um, your full name and your address, and then what lot it is, and we'll certainly answer any questions we can and prepare the best we can for March 18th. Anyone? You can pick whichever one. If you'd like to sit down and speak from the mic, sit here, if you'd like to stand.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ed Nikozia, I'm on number 2, Palm Terrace. I had written a, a, a letter to Mr. Goberto, inquiring about map 8, parcel 209, number 8, Audubon Road.
209, yep.
This is the, um, piece of property that's adjacent to our home. Um, it's, it's mostly wetlands, but it's a nice, open space. I'm really looking for it just so we can preserve that open space. We can have the vista, um, there's lots of wildlife there. I'd like to be able to go out there and clean up the, the trash. I mean, the pond committee does a great job cleaning up the, the, you know, multiple times over the years, they've cleaned up tires and whatever's out there, but it accumulates back. So some of it, if I do, if I walk the edge of my property, I can see it, I'd really like the right to be able to go out there and clean it all up. Um, I don't wanna expand my, my dwelling into this property, I simply wanna preserve it for open space. I noticed here, if I may, number 5, Audubon Terrace, is on the list. That abuts my property, our home, between, um, our lot line and Burrows Road. And that, over the years, I've gotten letters from the town, um, asking me if I was interested in it. Um, it's a very small slice, it's right on the edge of the road, lots of snow goes there, there's all kinds of stuff there. I didn't ask for that one, um, it ended up on the list, I don't, I don't know what, why it's there. Maybe you're thinking of consolidating them all in one sale, but, um, that wasn't part of our request, so.
So you would have no interest, even if we did put it out for offer?
Well, that, it's interesting you say that, because it would depend on the sale price.
Again, how we've done it in the past, is these do go out for bid, and ultimately, how they've gone, is that they'll be basically selling for the cost of whatever it costs us through our legal fees and everything to transfer it over to you, 1,600 bucks, 1,800 bucks. I, I'm just throwing out numbers from what I can remember in the past. And what we've asked residents to do is, again, don't, you know, if you live six lots down from here, there really is, this lot does you no good. We really try to encourage the abutters to take advantage of this opportunity to wrap it into their existing property. It just makes more sense. So we wanna see people be able to put on an addition on their home where they wouldn't be able to do before, or expand a garage and add a second bay or a third bay, or add a shed or add a pool and things like that. That's what our ultimate goal here was. And it's a win-win, because now it allows us to get that, um, land back on the tax rolls.
Okay. And would it, in the tax base, the tax rate is based on the, um, valuation, the current valuation?
So it would be based on land value, not residential value. So land value is significantly less when you, when it's assessed. Land value is one rate, property value is another, as you can see in your, it's on your tax bill. So if we're adding another 1,000 square feet to your property, or 2,000 square feet to your property, whatever you're paying on the other square footage is roughly, I believe, how we, but it's all, it all gets assessed in. And you can actually see the town assessor and tell her you're interested in these properties, and she'll be able to give you an estimate of what that would be.
Okay, 'cause I did look it up on the interactive maps, and it gave a valuation, is that accurate?
I believe those are all accurate, right?
They may, so when you're going on the interactive map, it's possible that it may be lagging a year in updating from the assessed value, but, uh, it should be reasonably close.
Pretty close.
Did you say you weren't interested in 5?
Um, I, I am, I'd really be more interested if it was 5 and 8. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna own just 5, but I'm, I am interested. And again, I'm, I'm interested to see what it costs the town to sell. So if it has, depends how much it costs.
And just, if I could, 'cause we're...
Yes, please.
This is informational, but according to the information that I'm looking at on 8, even though there were a number of reports on 5, um, for the Nikozias being the interested par, party interested in acquisition of 5, it's also in 8, and it looks like 8 is, it looks like 60...
69,000.
60-plus percent, um, 90% wetlands.
Right.
Right? No, that's 5, I'm sorry, excuse me. 8 is 60-plus percent wetlands and flood zone, that's what it's saying, so the potential to build a garage or something else, you know, that's a huge caveat to say that.
Sure.
You'd be able to do that.
Yep.
I also notice a lot of these are in aquifer districts, so extending your house or in addition to your house might not even be...
May not be.
...permissible, but...
Nor would it be my intention, our intention.
Somebody would just wanna make sure nothing had ever happened in the future, they have control.
Right, that's really...
Preservation.
Preservation, we like the view, we like the privacy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here interested in 5 Audubon or 8? Okay, next, please.
Fernando Bonaventura, that's 92 Burrows Road. Uh, we're interested in, uh, the property behind our house, it's all wetlands and stuff. We've been there for 32 years, and we've been maintaining a 100-foot by 50-foot section of it by mowing it. The previous owner was doing the same thing, so we maintained that area. So really only looking for that much, 'cause the rest is, is all wetlands and, uh, and, and things like that, but, you know.
144.
Uh, it would be map 8, parcel 144, yep.
Is this entirely wetland or flood zone?
Exactly, exactly. So, and the only section that isn't is about 100 feet by 30 feet or so.
It's about six acres total?
Six acre, is that what it is?
It's big, yeah.
It's 270,000 square feet.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I'm not really looking, I wasn't really looking for the whole thing, I was trying to just, you know, utilize, uh, you know, that, because I saw the size of the lot, and, and so, uh, I've been there for 32 years, eminent domain, and that's why I was really asking, right? Is there something that the town can do, since I've been, we've been taking care of the land for 32 years?
So typically, we don't subdivide it up to, we don't break them up?
I generally don't.
No. Because I believe the value from a, an expense standpoint, I don't think there is, they don't get, it's not a negative, right? When it's wetlands, there's no value, my understanding, um, from assessment, right?
It's so depending upon the nature of it, it may be classified at a lower, a lower value per acre, correct?
Right.
Yeah, we're not looking to expand the house, we're not looking to do any construction.
No, we don't wanna expand your, your checkbook either.
Right.
That's the most important thing for me, but we wanna turn the land over. If, if you want that little bit, you have to take all of it, that's my understanding.
That's, that's generally what's happened, and, and through you, Mr. Chairman. So generally, what, what we've done is asked the, the purchasing party to pay for all of the costs associated with the parcel, so you end up paying the town's tax title attorney fees, the recording fee at the registry, there's a pretty substantial advertising fee, because we do need to advertise for the auction in the newspaper. And those costs are generally the same, no matter the size of the parcels, so from a, a value standpoint.
So we're only gonna give 100 square feet, you'd still pay the same for the whole 270...
And, and that's fine.
But also to subdivide it, now you're talking about a much more substantial cost.
Oh, okay, that would be, that would be significant.
But, but in this particular property, just, you know, in the interest of being, you know, forthright, I know the Conservation Commission is, is very concerned about selling the property, too. So I just, I, that's one that I remember.
This is one that's on the list, their list that they wanna look at.
I, I believe they wanna look very closely, and I...
So, please come back on the 18th.
Okay.
We have your comment on that. We'll look into it a little bit more, and we'll certainly have more information for you. And if we have something in advance, can we make sure we send it up?
Sure, sure, so we have a package of information we can get to all of you, I, I think we have your contact information in the office.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment there? But you're, you're talking about, when you're talking about the maps, you're not talking about, because all of that, all around there is north riding land, so there's no, it's already all, but already, you'd all, you already divided it by the assessor map, so that doesn't make any sense to me that you're talking about having a plan to subdivide when it's all our land.
What he's saying was, if we wanna take 1,000 square feet out of this, and you just sell that to him, it would be va, significantly expensive, more expensive for us to go out and have a survey, go out...
Engineering costs would be expensive.
Redo the map, cob out, now go out and have to go and, um...
It's just a, it's just a, from what he's saying, it's just a very small portion of that.
You would still have to send a survey, or shoot new lines, submit that through.
Planning.
Planning, right?
Draw milearm plans, record them at the registry, use them to involve...
Right, that's expensive process.
Supposedly there's wetlands involved.
Next, please.
Hello?
Hello?
We've done, I did it for conservation and reason.
So, uh, we're interested...
Sorry, your full names and address.
Julie and Steve Carrero.
25 Woodside Drive. So, uh, we're interested in the, the lot beside us, uh, for the same reasons everyone else is, we wanna preserve it. Uh, there's a lot of development on the street, there was just recently a three-story home, uh, takes a lot of the views away from the river. So, um, you know, we wanted to purchase this land to, you know, keep it in the family, just space, you know, space-wise.
What lot was that, I'm sorry?
23 Woodside Drive.
23, thank you. 17.
Yeah. So we, we've noticed, um, lot 41 was sold, uh, to the owner of lot 43, and it's kinda the same situation, same size. Um, so we wanted to pursue it, you know, again, just to preserve it, there's a, you know, there's a tire over there, there's a steel drum, we wanna clean it up.
Yep.
But definitely keep the trees, keep the, you know, the, the whole nature of it that we, uh, that we enjoy with the family.
Okay.
Looks like you have town land on both sides of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More of this one, because we believe that the person who just sold their house to build the, the one next one is gonna sell that, and there's gonna be like a three-story building put there, and we, we don't want that eyesight, we wanna keep the woods there.
Gotcha.
So we don't have to, uh, have to see that, but, you know, we wanted to, uh, to present this, uh, for your, uh, consideration.
Okay. Let's see, something real quick. Yeah, 7,100 square feet, 20, okay, perfect, great. Make sure you come back on the 18th.
All right, thank you, thanks for taking the time.
Mr. Gobert.
Just a, a little bit of feedback, just so that you're kind of aware in advance. Um, we did hear from, I believe, the planning, uh, the planning commission's agent, as well as from the Conservation Commission's agent, and I, I do think that they are interested in the town reserving the ability to access the river on this property, so that is some feedback that you may hear, it may even be a request to not sell it.
Okay.
The other thing that you should be aware of, is, as was mentioned earlier, your abutting property owners may also submit bids on this as well, so just be aware that it would be an auction most likely.
But could we structure this such that we could put an easement on it for access?
Uh, you could potentially, that's something I could discuss with the planning, uh, commission.
I would, if we could sell it and they want it, I, I think, as long as they give us the ability to access the property to get to the river, I, I'd like to see them...
What about the access on 27? Would they be able to access the river on 27? 'Cause that's town-owned land as well.
You're talking lot number 19, the one on the other side of your house?
Yeah.
Um, that, that's a possibility, uh, as well. I, I think from the initial conversation, we got the same feedback on that lot as well, so, um, that there's a concern that with, uh, that it may be in the town's interest to be able to access the river in multiple locations. That's something that we heard. I, I just wanna share that, it may not, may not impact the board's decision.
Well, we need to let the boards and committees know that we have an interested party.
Yeah.
And, you know, the goal is, you know, to sell this property, so the goal isn't to keep it. So they need to be...
Again, I, I'm just the messenger.
And I'm, and I'm giving you a message to bring to that.
All right, thanks.
It looks like we have multiple segments there.
We do, spor, in sporadic spots along the street to get to the river.
Do we actually, do, and do you actually see anyone, does anyone actually use that?
The woman at 43, she bought 41 for the same reason, just to kinda keep the space in between her neighbor, and, and she's totally preserved it. And again, we're looking to do the same thing, we have a feeling that house is gonna get knocked down when it's sold, you know, in the near future, and there will be a three-story building that's put there. And, you know, we wanna preserve while we moved to North Reading, um, you know, have some space and some nature around us, we are on the river, we, we wanna enjoy that scenery instead of seeing a clear-cut, you know, big building.
And we've been there for about two years, and we've never seen a town out there to access it.
No.
And you can come on in, but if they're gonna keep it to, get it to access, we haven't, honestly, haven't seen them.
We've been doing this for almost eight years now, maybe our ninth year. Something we've started, uh, 'cause we know this property's a sitting island, it's, it'd be great to...
Yeah, I need to see it cleaned up, there's, there's some trash over there, and...
Yep. Thank you for being patient.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind cleaning it. All right, hey, thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, we'll see you on the 18th. Anyone else? Please.
I'm Jerry Treeby Breton, and my husband's...
Sorry, Sherry?
Jerry Treeby Breton. Mm-hmm. I'm at 5 Bear Road. We requested, um, purchasing the properties on map 9, parcels 54 and 58.
Okay.
So, for the same reason everyone else, um, so our house, we've been in our house for about 10 to 15 years, and the, it kind of abuts our driveway, one of our driveways. Um, there's, the other people that live around us, there's a road between them and these woods.
Yep.
Um, and so we just wanna incorporate this land, we have a third of an acre now, and it would just get us a little bit more space, we have two young kids, um, and so it would just give them a little bit more space. And like you said, it would be for either a shed or a pool, we, we just wanna be able to clean it up. Um, right now, there's a lot of detritus over there and broken glass, um, and also poison oak, um, all throughout sort of that, the flatter area that's next to the woods. Um, and so, yeah, so we wanna clean it up and incorporate that land into the land that we have now.
Okay, so that's, it was two lots there, right? It's 50...
Yeah, there were two. Originally, I think I had requested, when I came in and talked to someone, they just suggested that we go ahead and just request for both, because they're so small.
54 and 55.
And they're oddly shaped. I think one's like a U-shaped.
Right.
So somebody owns the, the frontage to the road.
Yeah.
You know, so we're not interested in that, I mean, we know the people who own it, we, like I said, we're just, it's just a nice woods area, our kids like to play out there, but it's not really safe.
Perfect.
Um, and then I have another, I have a quick question for you.
Please, go right ahead.
So, from that town land, from the storm today, we have a huge tree that went right over into our driveway.
That was on town land?
Yes, how do, does that something, should we call?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have to call the DPW?[1572.26]
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Call DPW tomorrow. Notify them that a town-owned, uh, tree fell onto your property.
Okay.
And then...
It's a big one, so it's not easily, we can't remove it ourselves.
We had a lot of them today.
Yeah.
On our golf course, took up a lot of damage today.
Um, and then I have another question. Um, so if they do decide that they can sell that land, um, you said it might be put in as like a public auction or something?
We have to put it off for auction.
So, will we be notified in the mail as well?
We select.
Yeah, no, I understand, but will we be notified as well? Because sometimes those are really hard to find in the paper, and they're really small prints, and I wouldn't want to, like, miss it.
So, what we would do is, when you come here on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
And you let the town administrator know what parcels you're interested in, he will make sure you get that notice directly.
Okay, that would be great, because it just, it might miss us with our lives.
Yeah, we don't want that.
We're just like, we don't want to miss the, the small print.
We want the people that have bought these properties to have the opportunity to have access to them. Now, if you have a neighbor that's interested in the same ones, then...
Yeah.
In, you have equal reason for it, then we would obviously put it off a bid, and then...
Yeah, no, I understand. No, I understand. We just want to make sure we don't miss it.
But the board ultimately makes the decision. Even if we have a higher bidder, that's two parcels down, it doesn't make some sense.
Yeah.
And you're the bidder, and you're significantly less bidder.
Yeah.
We sometimes go with the less bidder just because it makes more sense. The way we want to see those parcels reused.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so can I ask you?
Sure.
In the, in the map that we have, the assessor's map, on, it looks like there's your parcel with your driveway, and then it looks like there's another, is there a paved area?
There's two, we have two driveways, basically. When we bought the house, they, they paved a driveway that was further down, right abutting the woods.
Yes, okay.
You know, so that's why.
Is that closer to Old Andover Road?
That's closer to Old Andover Road, and, I mean, the other driveway really can't fit two cars in it very easily, so maybe that's why they did it, but, um, and we don't even know if we'd keep that. I mean, we don't know. If we could incorporate that all into a big yard, we don't know what we'd do with it. We just kind of...
Yeah.
It's all built, it says it's all entirely built.
Yeah, it's a, no, it's a great, this is a perfect example of, you know, incorporating into that a bidder, and now they can...
That's usable land, too.
Right. Maybe move the driveway on that side, put a garage in it. Yeah, let us know when the pool's open.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Don't put that in the minutes, please, Karen.
We do, we do want to keep the woods there, though, because the woods are really nice. It's, it's like, you know, it keeps the privacy off the road.
Yep.
Except for when a tree, but that's the first time that's happened, a tree fell over. Thank goodness my husband was at work and wasn't parked there, so...
Yeah, thank you. But please, yes.
So your home is at Five Bear Road, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll notify DPW now.
Yes, thank, oh, thank you.
Very much. So somebody should be by there tomorrow, the next day. We have a lot out there, so be patient. But now you don't have to do anything. He's going to take care of it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing it up. Anyone else? Okay.
Continue the hearing?
Motion to continue the hearing, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue the public hearing to Monday, March eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, at seven P.M.
At seven P.M.? We want to do seven?
Only because we have budget hearings starting at seven thirty.
Okay, seven P.M. Thank you. Mr. Clark, I am sorry that we kept you staying an hour longer than you should have.
We need a second motion.
Oh, I got a, I got a second by Miss Minipelli?
Second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, one absence. Okay, we're going to skip around a little bit more and go back to number item number nine, water meter program update. Real time.
I keep looking at the clock.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes, so...
So, good evening. Um, I think I was here in mid-December. We did kind of a quick update on the water meter project at that time, um, and I was invited back, so I'm here. Just to let you know where we are on the project. Um, so this is a summary through about, uh, the middle of this month. Kind of the key is, we're at about ninety-two percent with the things that have gone on since this, since February fourteenth. We're somewhere in the ninety-two to ninety-three percent range in terms of total number of meters that have been replaced in town. Um, just, you know, graphic how, how it went through the months. Obviously, May to November were kind of the big months for putting the meters in. It very much tailed off in December, a big dip in January. Uh, we did send out another round of certified letters to people who haven't yet complied or haven't yet allowed us into their homes, which is why you're seeing a little upspike in February, um, and probably a similar number in March. And then that's going to pretty much end the obligation of the contractor, um, in terms of the outside contractor. Anything that's left would pretty much have to be picked up by the water department, um, in terms of the meters that would be left at that point. Uh, similar, I showed this exact same slide the last time. Why don't, why aren't we at a hundred percent? So there are a bunch of different issues. There's plumbing issues, there's access issues. Um, kind of the key one is that bottom one, non-responsive customers. We've sent out three postcards, we've sent out, uh, three door, we've gone knocking doors three times and left notices, and then we've done a certified mailing to every, uh, everyone that didn't respond to one of those first six ways. So there are, there are just some that we're not getting into, which is why we're not at a hundred percent. Um, this slide is, again, a continuation from December. Kind of the grayed-out things are things we talked about in December that have been done. Uh, so, we continued to install meters, uh, starting in January. If we were having a property transfer, going out to do a closing or a final water bill on a property, and they had not done the meter replacement yet, we made that a requirement before we came in and did that final water bill, that we have to get in there and change that meter out. Uh, that's resulted in probably six to ten meters just through that program right there. Um, in January, we did issue our final batch of certified letters. People who had not prior to that received a certified letter, telling them that they need to be part of this program, telling them that there would be fees, uh, to them if they didn't take part in the program. So those letters went out in January. I'm going to skip that next bullet for just a second. Um, again, the contractor continued to, uh, install meters through that prod, that, uh, period. Um, they have applied for what's called substantial completion of the project. They've very much done all the steps they've been required. So both the, uh, the installation contractor and the, the meter supply contract is a little more cut and dry, but they've both reached the point where they've done what's required under the contract, and they're, they've filed for substantial completion. It doesn't mean they're done dealing with us, but it means that they're really getting to the end steps where we're just putting together punch list type items. Um, we talked about this last, in December. In February, so the bills that went out last week, we did issue, uh, a special meter reading fee of fifty dollars on, uh, people that went through that seven, seven-step process, and we have not heard from them. So people have gotten bills with that fifty-dollar special meter reading fee. Uh, the, the, the plan is to go forward and charge that quarterly on bills that go out. Um, what we, what we're required to do is basically kind of maintain two meter reading systems. We have the old-style system that's really, uh, the, it's not even supported anymore, so once they die, we're kind of out of luck, but we have to send them in manually to the house, plug on to those ARBs, and still read the box on the outside of the house, bring that data back in. It can't be processed the same way as the newer, newer data can, so we basically have to manually process them just in order to get them in and keep them in that same billing process that we go through with everyone else.
Mark, I have a question for you on that bullet.
Sure.
So the fifty-dollar charge, is that the maximum number?
So fifty dollars is the, it's the, the fee we've had for doing final water bills, which would require us to make, again, that special trip to your house, generate a special bill. Uh, when we, uh, set the rates last year, we changed it from a final meter reading fee to a fifty-dollar special meter reading fee, so...
I, I do believe, though, when you step back and you look at the magnitude of what it takes sending out all these attempts, and now keeping both systems, the ability to continue to read both systems, it's, to me, seems like it's going to exceed the fifty-dollar charge. I think that number is low, and maybe this board, maybe not under, you know, this current board structure, but maybe future boards may need to look at that number and consider changing it to a higher number. Mr.?
A couple of things. How many non-compliant customers do we have? Uh, so what we're going to wind up with non-compliant is, when we're done with the project, is probably in the range of a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
All right. I had thought, may, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to charge the fifty dollars like on a weekly basis, because our people that have the new meter are getting their meter, their water read like every hour, essentially. I didn't hear that. I don't recall weekly, but I do remember the quarterly discussion. But I, I do believe that fifty-dollar charge is low.
I'll just throw this. The weekly charge was a comment made by a member of the board of selection back when we were discussing that, whether we, we, I don't think the board ever voted to do that weekly.
No, we didn't.
So the fee, what the fee should cover is the cost for us to go out and read. So we're not, when we're reading the meters, if we're doing a final water bill on your house, Mr. Prisco, I have to specifically send somebody to your house if you don't have a new meter and read that and come back, and it's a one, you know, a one day at a time, or...
I just don't think fifty dollars a quarter is going to encourage someone to swap that meter over. Well, the, I should, sorry, Mr. Minipelli, my issue is that you also have to finance the ability to read both systems. That's my issue that you have to roll into. So it's a, it's sort of a, that charge needs to capture the net cost for these hundred-something people that don't want to do what everyone else in the community has done, and then, and they're going to dig their heels in. We still have to be able to charge them for the water, and that's going to be expensive. Mr. Messeri?
When we implemented this program, we talked about the fact that the older meter's probably not accurately measuring the water usage. And I clearly can verify, since my bill went up, and my water usage, at least in half of my life, I remember, my eyes didn't change. Our habits are the same, that the meter's doing its job.
So I, I'm going to...
And therefore, someone that doesn't have a new meter is getting away with some, possibly getting away with some percentage water cost.
There is a possibility. So the meters generally are accurate. The ones that we pulled out and tested are generally very accurate still, even though some of them have been in twenty-plus years. It was a high-quality meter we put in back in the nineteen-nineties. No doubt, some of them are, are starting to go slow. Now, I, I, prior to my time here, I worked in the city of Haverhill, and we had, you know, fifty and sixty-year-old meters, and you pull them out and test them, and, you know, low flow, no, nothing's going through the meter, medium flow, nothing's registering on the meter, or maybe, maybe it's picking up the high flow. But there definitely is a point where those old meters tail off. So we, I mean, we're going to need to make a decision on, on, uh, how to, how to get that last five percent, if that's what it winds up being, or three percent at the end of this project.
Mrs. Minipelli?
It, you will probably, it sounds like, because they, you've made this seven attempts with those, that you put the twenty, the fifty-dollar charge on, that you're going to start doing quarterly, but from what you described, I think when we originally talked about that and sort of likening it to going out for a final water read each quarter, that makes sense, but when you come, when you explain, and then, but you take that, and then you have to come back, you have to filter it into a, a different database. So you're basically managing two different water reading programs. That's where the significant expense is, and, and the, and I think you're not likely, someone might get a fifty-dollar charge and call you and say, what's this? Oh, let me fix it, but you're not likely to get that result from this particular group which has received seven attempts. So you may need to, we may need to increase that to be a more realistic approach to your managing two different data capturing programs. That basically is what you're doing.
Right now, that only generates twenty thousand dollars, but it's got to be significantly more money than twenty grand to run that system. To run the system, manage it, all the labor that goes into it, the billing side of it from the finance department now, half the sending out bills with one system and bills, and now over a hundred bills with another system. You know, you have to capture all those costs. These people are not going to be reasonable and obey by the requirements that have been set.
So to go to Mrs. Minipelli's statement, since the bills went out, I've received, and I believe this is the only call DPW has received, is one, one person questioning that charge, and, oh, I, I need to schedule to get my meter. So out of the ones that did get the fifty-dollar charge, I'm not saying not everyone opens their bill right away and looks at it, but only one of them actually called and, and made the comment that, yeah, I need to schedule to get that meter replaced in order to do away with the fifty-dollar charge. Um, so, uh, the fifty dollars was something we talked about back last, uh, I think it was last June, when we actually voted to change the name from a final meter reading to a special meter reading.
Yeah.
And then, as we said in December, that's when we said we're going to throw that on the February bills.
I'm just asking Mrs. Minipelli and Mr. Schultz to keep in mind that when you're, you're sitting here again, maybe the June, October timeframe, and your, this discussion comes up again, I think then you're going to have to go back and maybe reconsider this.
Yeah, will you be able to sort of give us a sense of the, the labor involved, you know, to, because it's setting a fee for that service, which is separate than the service that everyone else is getting. So setting a fee to make that charge, uh, to increase that charge, we'd want to see what the cost is. I don't think fifty dollars is going to cut it either.
All, all the labor and all that's going into it, so it's not spread over multiple departments, it's all taking place within the water department. So we're pushing those bills into the same billing system, so they, they go out as a similar billing, but there's a lot of manual crunching and manipulation to get those outside readings into that group. You know, the, uh, right now, the, the bulk of them, we're getting a reading every hour. If we want to read them on February first, we pull them in, and we got all the readings of the, uh, radio meters on February first. The rest of it, it's still a guy going out in a truck with the gun, plugging on to the houses, boom, boom, walking through the snow, and bringing that back and downloading it, and then we have to, we have to manually pull those, and, and I've been hand-entering those into the, into the system, so. Um, and just to, to jump back to that other dark bullet, the January two thousand and nineteen, um, we just haven't had a chance. So the people with the iron service lines, the old lines that the contractor wouldn't touch, we haven't had a chance to send those letters out, but we do still intend to get letters out to those people, uh, probably early next month, and, uh, just advise them that they need to, to change those meters out.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Just one more. I, I wanted to ask you about that, too, but I didn't want to interrupt you when you were explaining the highlighted ones. Do we have something in place, let's say if there's a hardship scenario where a, a water user just can't afford to replace the, the line, do we have a program that, you know, low-interest loan or something that we can, they can use to do that repair? There's a, if you have some sort of hardship?
Uh, at this current time, I don't think we have anything that we can, we can offer to people.
What do you think the typical cost of that would be? I know that's hard to say.
It's a couple thousand dollars on the low end. Uh, it really depends how far the house is back from the street, and then what type of soils are in the neighborhood. If you're on the top of a nice rocky glacial till hill, it's a lot harder to do than if you're down in a nice sandy neighborhood where, you know, they can basically dig a hole on either end, and they can actually pull a new service through, and, uh, it's not quite as hard. But it's probably two thousand dollars on the very low end, and it goes up fairly quickly from there.
How many, um, customers do you think that that...
Uh, that's probably going to be about a hundred and fifty, or a hundred to a hundred and fifty homes in that situation.
Any other questions?
I just really quickly, and I, I hope you guys will bear with me. I just do want to go through this. I got to solve this.
Go ahead.
My disclaimer is, I have no vested interest in this, other than the benefit it brings to the water department, um, but...
No stock in the company?
No stock, and I, I know it's going to sound like I do, but, you know, you got in the, on the, the left-hand side here, you got the flyer, and everyone got this in their water bill, and it just basically says, here's this portal, it's up there, it's running. You could go on and log on and get information. We can see your hourly readings, you can see your hourly readings. And I just want to go through this real quick. So if you log on to the site, uh, kind of the homepage will show, you'll see your, your average daily use in gallons per day. There's some recommendations. Uh, this is a commercial site, so some of the recommendations are a little more commercially based. Um, down here in the, the lower corner, if you click on the settings tab, you can actually have it notify you either by email, text mail, or voicemail, and you can set your, your comfort level. If my daily use is one and a half times what it is, I want to get notified by that, because something's going on. Uh, if my bill forecast looks like it's going to be two times what it normally is, I want to be notified, because I want to know, there's something going on. Um, there's a take action tab. You can look at, uh, upgrading faucets, or, again, this one's kind of a commercial property, but you can look at things. It gives you recommendations on what you can do to save water. And then the one that I am super big on is this track tab. Um, what this is showing, this is showing, this is one of the town buildings, and it's showing two weeks' worth of water usage. So if you're looking, uh, I think that's a Sunday, this is a building that's open Monday to Friday, so you see the next five days, there's big use. There was a Saturday, a Sunday, and then last Monday was a holiday, so very low use. And then again, it peaks back up Monday to Friday. Just good, and I just want to go through a couple of things that we see from this. This is all coming out of the bills going out last week and questions we've received. This is a residential property with no leaks in the home. And what you're seeing here is, uh, you know, midnight, no use. One, two, three in the morning, somebody must have got up and used the bathroom at four o'clock in the morning, then Ben went back to bed, got up and showered. A little bit of breakfast use, some late afternoon use, a little bit of water use before they went to bed. Normal use. It, uh, it's the blue color, I'm sorry. The blue color, normal use. You're not seeing anything unusual. It's just a typical use in the home. There's no leaks in this home. We've had so many calls come from people, my bill jumped, and it used to be, gee, we read your bill May first, now we read it August first. We got two snapshots. What you did in between, we can't really say to you. Here's a house with a minor leak on it, and what you're seeing here, you're seeing the blue usage, but you're also seeing, every hour of the day, there's water use, twenty-four hours a day. The system knows that shouldn't be, that's not normal residential use.
That's my house.
So, it's actually saying there's two gallons a day, two gallons an hour of leakage on this, and you can see there's an orange bar, possible leaks of two gallons. That's that use that's occurring every ga, every hour of the day. So what does two gallons an hour mean to you? It's almost fifty gallons a day, it's about forty-four hundred gallons over the course of a quarter, and depending on, you know, where you fall in our, our tier structure, that means a forty to an eighty-dollar increase in your water bill. So that, that's basically like somebody else, one additional person moving into your home is a two-gallon-an-hour leak. Here's another home I got a call on today. This guy has a nineteen-gallon-an-hour leak in his home. Think about that. That's a pretty big leak. What's that do? Four hundred fifty gallons a day, forty-two thousand gallons a quarter. This would add in a quarter, seven-hundred-fifty dollars to your water bill. You have the ability for this system to notify you and avoid a seven-hundred-fifty-dollar increase in your water bill. I've probably had four homes with this size leak call me in the last week. We can go right on, and we can sell them, you know, log on, you can see this, you can actually get notified of this. What's causing these leaks? Ninety-nine percent of these leaks are one of two leaks, and they're both on your toilet. The, the little two-gallon leak is the float on your toilet's walked off, and the water levels come up, and the water levels, the water's trickling into that overflow pipe in the back of your toilet. It's a very slow leak, it's a very quiet leak. You won't hear it, even if you take the cover off that tank and stick your head right there, you're not going to hear it. But if you take the cover off and see the water's touching the top of that overflow pipe, that's the leak you have. The second leak, the bigger leak, is, it's the flap valve leak. This, that's the one where if you put dye in the tank of the toilet, you'll see the color show up in the bowl, because it's leaking at this, this location right here. It's a little bit bigger leak, so instead of a two-gallon-an-hour leak, you're getting a twenty-gallon-an-hour leak.
So I have a gallon every hour?
You have a gallon every hour?
Every hour.
That's a, that, that's this leak. Go to all your toilets, take the, the cover off the toilet, and find the one where the water level's up to the top. The old thing, it used to be the, the metal bar with the big ball on the end of it, and you could just bend the arm, bend the metal bar.
Right.
Now they all, you know, low-flow toilets, they all have some kind of screw mechanism or something to adjust that float. Those floats walk off real quickly. I've been in new homes, three bathrooms, all three toilets have that kind of leak on them.
We thank you for your business.
Just want to show you, now, here's two nightmare scenarios. This is a burst pipe, 200 gallons an hour. What you can see is no usage. This house is empty. Then all of a sudden, it jumps up, and we're seeing leaks, and this is daily leakage instead of hourly leakage now. It's almost 4,800 gallons a day of leakage. We actually got notified of this. We went out, nobody's home, we tried calling, we posted the door, and they came back, and they actually shut the water off. But this is water that's running somewhere in the house. This is a burst pipe somewhere in the cellar. If you're away in Florida, especially in the wintertime, you may be lost heat in your house, those real cold snaps we had earlier this couple months ago, pipes break in the cellar. This could have been flooding your cellar all February long. One more. This is a disabled vet who's gone in the hospital. Again, a burst pipe in the cellar. This one's 300 gallons an hour. We got into this house, we were able to get in touch with the landlord, go in and shut the water off. But basically, it was about two feet of water, and it was a dirt floor cellar, but it was, you know, pretty much filling that up. You can think about the kind of damage that can occur to a home real quickly with a burst pipe. This is able to tell you, even if you're away, that you have a burst pipe.
When I went, I've been using it, and I love it. And I didn't know I was losing a gallon an hour every day, all day long, 24/7, that's what's happening. So now I know what to go do, because that was going to be my question for you.
I think there's a bunch of those type leaks, the little gallon an hour type ones. Low-flow toilets were meant to save water. Unfortunately, the engineering in them isn't perfect, and there are a lot of problems with them. So, again, I know it sounds like I got stuck in this or something, but go here, log on. You know, we're seeing, so we sent these out in the bills last week. We had about 40 people that had signed up to follow this project. It's gone up over 100 as of today.
I love it. I tell everyone. I have, I've been all demystifying it.
Everyone that comes in the office and questions me, I'll tell them, you've got this flyer in your bill, you've got to log on, because this is, it's just, it doesn't cost us any more if everybody in town logs on than if we have 100 people logging on. And the value to you for this is just, it's so great. Again, there are people that don't want to change their meters out. This is what you're losing out on. You could have, you could have that leak in your house, you could have this leak in your house, you don't know. And then you're going to get that $800 bill from us, and you're going to yell at us.
It works. I'm telling you, now, I even know when my daughters went to college. I just know, because I see the spike, I go, yeah.
Those nights.
They launch out. Okay, this is great. Anything else?
That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I expect a report from each one of you. It's really, I'm telling you, you're going to love it. I look at it every day now, I'm addicted to it. Mr. Misery?
Mark, you should just mention that it's easy to set up an account and log into. I've encouraged people to use it. I know you've gone through a very good demonstration of...
Yeah, I should have said this when it was up there. So it asks for your account number, which is a seven-digit number on your bill, and unfortunately, on the bill, it's account numbers on the right and customer numbers on the left, and then when you go to the website, it's asking you to switch them around. But it's just asking you, and they're on your bill. If you've got that flyer, you've got a bill. Account number's on there, dash, customer number, and then it asks for your zip code, which I think most of them know.
But once you do it, you save it, and you never have, you just go to your link, you click on it, you log you right in. You don't have to keep on putting it in.
You do have to put a dash between those.
There's a dash, right.
You have to do the dash.
It's either people are putting the numbers in, you know, the opposite numbers, or they're leaving out that dash, but it's fairly simple to sign up for, and it's good information. I just really recommend it.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Next on the agenda is the review of FY 2020 revenue and expense procedure. My plan tonight wasn't to go through it. My plan was to, we sent it out to all the board members, and we wanted to just get any feedback you had. Michael Gavaro and his work, put a lot of hours into that procedure, and what I like about it most is that, you know, we are going to see some change in the board, but now, the next people that come along, they can see the procedure on how we create our revenue and expense plan. Mr. Misery?
I think one of the key points you were trying to get out was that the budgeting process with respect to town and school is going to change, with the exception of a couple of items.
That's right. Yep. Because we're going to have a lot of change in that school committee, and I think it's really important to just have it documented, so everyone knows that, you know, this isn't something we just do in the back of an envelope. There's a good process in place, and it works. And we can explain, the numbers tell the story. We need to be able to help the folks that sit in these chairs after us to understand how we create that. So I appreciate everyone looking at it, and, you know, all the comments. We'll move on to the next item, which is the review of the June town meeting timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as we've been doing for the past two town meetings, we've again created this document relative to action items, and it's really intended to provide us a high-level overview of the major decision points and important dates relative to the town meeting. So the warrant is open. We have submitted notice to departments, boards, and commissions that they may submit warrant articles. Those articles are due to the board no later than March 18th, 2019, which is just a few weeks away, and I've highlighted that in red here. I'm not going to go through everything on here, but I'll just note here, more for the board, because often the board will have discussion about adding warrant articles. We intend to submit the warrant to Town Council for review on or about April 23rd, and hope to have it back a week later for the board to consider at its, what we believe will be its May 6th meeting, depending upon what the board chooses later on in the agenda tonight. But if you're, the board's considering adding warrant articles that are not submitted by departments, boards, or committees. We have till roughly April 23rd in order to do that. Excuse me. I'm going to be asking the board to sign the warrant roughly one month out from the June town meeting, so that would be, we believe, on Monday, March, Monday, May 6th, depending upon the board's finalizing the meeting schedule. For the public, the voter registration deadline is 20 days prior to the regular town meeting or June town meeting, 10 days prior to any special town meeting, and that would be on May 21st, 2019, based on this year's meeting. The board will take up warrant article assignments at the May 20th meeting, assuming that May 20th is the second meeting date in May, and the last meeting before town meeting, as well as, actually, it may not be the last meeting before town meeting, because we have that extra week in June now. But that would be the evening where we would make designations for warrant, for assignments, and also for the informational hearing to take place, where the public can learn more about the warrant articles, and that's what we believe would take place. And again, the meeting would be on Monday, June 10th, which is the date that was selected by the board at the hearing in January. Really, that's it?
Please. Okay. Any questions? Mr. Misery?
Could you send a copy of that out? Would you send a copy of that schedule out?
So this document is in your meeting packet for this evening, but we can add it...
Was it a separate?
No, it should have been in the meeting packet.
Oh, then I...
What we will do is post it on the website. That's something we can do for this year. If the board would like to see it presented somewhere else in Dropbox or ShareFile, excuse me, we certainly can do that.
I think I stopped after the land.
And now, the upcoming meeting dates, is that what this bottom one is for?
Those are the key meeting dates, based on what we're recommending for upcoming meetings, but those could change depending upon the board's final action on dates. You don't have the agenda in front of me, is that the next item?
Yes, it is. That's the next thing.
Just going to step to my...
I know at some point, we had mentioned that we potentially won't have that meeting on the 6th, but we should plan and schedule, right?
What, the 6th? Oh, May 6th? So, looking at the calendar, our thinking was that if we were to go with, so we're proposing a meeting schedule that's in here for meetings to take place on April 1st, which would be the last departmental budget hearing. And then we have the holiday on April 15th, so we were suggesting April 22nd as the next meeting date, which is three weeks later. And then another two weeks later, on May 6th, which would be the opportunity for the board to sign the warrant and also to have the budget hearing. We suggested May 20th, but the board may wish to simply have a reorganization meeting after the May election, and then allow the members at that point to set the next meeting date based on member availability.
Yeah, we should probably schedule a, so the election is the 7th?
Correct.
Typically, we do it that Thursday after, so I would suggest Bob and Andy, you know, Monday, the 9th, usually it's like a 5:00, 5:30.
He's on vacation with you.
And I know, but I'm just telling you, you should talk to, I'm sorry, Andy.
I knew he meant me.
Yeah. You guys should talk to, make sure we talk to Steve and let him know.
Michael, I will be away from April 7th to the 14th.
April 7th to the 14th. Okay.
I'm not trying to get you to change your meeting date, I'm just saying, wedding it out.
Yeah, that does work.
I'm away too, Bob. Exactly the same date.
Does this work for you, the way we have it laid out? April 1st, 22nd, then...
I'm away from April 6th to, and I return on April 12th, 1st and 22nd. And we have this Saturday, next Monday, and the 18th.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, 3rd to the 12th, I'm away.
So our intention through you, Mr. Chairman, would be to have the Capital Improvement Planning Committee present their recommendations on April 22nd, but also to go through an exercise at reconciling the budget to the available revenue numbers to the work of the financial planning team that same evening, but not have a final budget hearing for the public until that May 6th meeting. That was our thinking at least.
That's fine.
So it will be a bit of work, but I honestly don't think we're going to be ready for either of those items any sooner, based on our workload.
And the Saturday budget hearing is this Saturday?
This Saturday, beginning at 8:00 AM with the Police Department budget.
Are we going to have that on tele, it's going to be televised?
So I don't know if Karen's reached out to you guys, but if she hasn't, we would like it.
We're well aware, we'll be prepared.
Is it the Police Department?
Police Department first. It's in this room. The Police budget will be first, though. But yes.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second is what?
Fire, Police, Fire, DPW.
DPW, okay.
And that's it on that. Next is legal bills for December. Mr. Schultz?
I don't have a motion for that.
I missed the sheet, because I didn't go far enough. It kind of quit after the sale of land.
Whoa, take it back, it's part of the summer.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for December 2018 in the amount of $3,667. This file, Coleman and Page General, 1748, and Coleman and Page Labor, 1919, for a total of 3,667.00.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, one absent. Appointments, Library Trustees and Conservation Commission. Mr. Schultz?
Which one do we do first?
Library Trustees.
Library Trustees.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for appointment as a member of the Library Trustees for an expiring term through December 31, 2020. There's one opening and one candidate, Ms. Michelle Mullott.
Second. And if I can comment, the regular appointees is leaving.
Okay.
The individual that we're appointing was supposed to be appointed the last time I screwed up, and the individual has been actually acting as a trustee.
Okay.
So that's all screwed away now.
Excellent.
Once we vote, of course.
These roll call votes? Mr. Misery?
Aye.
Ms. Mullott, who are you voting for?
What's her name again?
Michelle Mullott is the candidate.
Michelle Mullott, yeah.
Michelle Mullott.
Michelle Mullott.
Yeah, Michelle Mullott. Okay. Next, Conservation Commission.
All right. Full member. Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for appointment as members of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2021. Randall Mason, Lauren Bishara, and Thomas Sanchez.
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Minipelli. So I've spoken with Mr. O'Leary this afternoon. He'd given me all the details. I'd shared that with Mrs. Minipelli, so she will be making the appointment recommendation.
The recommendation was to appoint Randall Mason to the position. Are you doing roll call?
No one else, right?
Oh, that was it, for that, yeah.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Randall Mason.
Mr. Schultz?
Randall Mason.
Mr. Misery?
Randall Mason.
And the chair votes Randall Mason.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following names for appointment as an associate member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2019. One opening, we have three candidates, Michael Hool, John Lape, and Beth Adams.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Mrs. Minipelli?
And Mr. O'Leary recommends for appointment John Lape as the associate member.
Any questions? Mrs. Minipelli?
John Lape.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Lape.
Mr. Misery?
Mr. Lape.
And the chair votes Mr. Lape. I want to thank all the applicants. Thank you for applying. Please continue to attend these meetings, even though if you didn't get appointed, you could still welcome to attend these meetings and apply for other boards and commissions that are open. Okay, next is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for the board members, as I indicated by email, I would be adding the TA report today, and I did add it to the ShareFile meeting folder today. Hopefully, everybody has the ability to pull it up. If not, I'll be reviewing it now. First, the Friends of North Reading Parks and Recreation will host its annual Wine and Food Social fundraiser on Friday, March 22nd, at 7:00 PM at Teresa's at Hillview. I'm told by the Friends that there has been some instances of proposed boycotting of the fundraiser because of other business ventures by the principal operator of the function hall at Hillview. While I'm certainly respectful of the political or other intentions of our residents, I would like to take this opportunity to remind the community, as was discussed earlier this evening, that the Hillview Country Club is owned by the town of North Reading, is Hillview Enterprise, and that a license has been issued to a third-party, Group One Entertainment, to operate a function facility and seasonal restaurant at this time. The Hillview Enterprise receives a flat rate monthly payment from Group One, as well as 3% of Group One's gross revenue, at the function facility and restaurant. Additionally, the proceeds from the Wine and Food Social go to Friends of North Reading Parks and Recreation, which engages in fundraising and to support, foster, and encourage interest in and promote athletic and recreational activities and facilities in the town of North Reading. I just would ask folks to keep that in mind as they are planning their attendance or plans in the future. While we've been, and I know that the board's been waiting patiently for an update on this, while we've been spared major snowfall this winter, winter weather has nonetheless required response by the Department of Public Works on 25 occasions since November as of February 18th. As of February 18th, we've expended $218,222.43, which is $43,222.43 above our appropriation of $175,000. This amount does not include open purchase orders. As is permitted under state law and as was required to respond to this winter weather, I've authorized deficit spending for snow and ice expenses. And just as a reminder, we budget a carryover for any snow and ice expenses above that $175,000 in the amount of $300,000. So we've eaten into that by about $43,000 at this point in time. No major snowfall, obviously, but quite a bit of callouts that we've had with regard to these storms, and a number of repeat callouts too for some of them because of the really cold weather. And I just want to take a moment to recognize, as Mr. Frisco said earlier, our DPW, obviously, we all noticed that we have that major snowfall, but they've been working diligently, day in and day out, throughout this winter, and I want to thank them for their efforts, as well as the efforts of the operations manager and the director. As has been previously discussed, North Reading was selected to host The Wall That Heals this summer. I've reviewed with the Veterans Agent the town's options for covering the costs associated with the wall's visit, and the Veterans Department gift account will be utilized to cover this cost with the intention of fundraising to replenish the account. And I think the director talked about her fundraising efforts, and I know that she's established a website. The gift account was established in 2010 to assist with funding of events, projects, activities, and incidentals for veteran services. The gift account has an unrestricted balance of over $14,000, with the cost of bringing the wall being $10,000. A $2,000 deposit was paid in January, and another payment will be circulated for approval on a warrant tomorrow for the board to sign. Again, as I mentioned, if the public is interested, visit northreadingma.gov/veterans-services for more information or to help...
for more information or to help with the wall's visit. Restrictions on the use of the Charles Anderson gift, the gift of the estate of Charles Anderson, which was in the amount of $150,000, to assist needy veterans, did not provide us a clear option to use these funds for this particular venture. So, we do have the funding in place, the purpose of the gift account was for these events. Related to that, I did receive a request for, from the VFW requesting repayment of their donation a few years ago, was a $600 donation for the Welcome Home Veterans Sign. And due to some challenges associated with the original sign contractor and the attention required by the visit by the Wall That Heals this year, sign's not expected to be purchased this year. That said, the intention is still to install a sign in the future, and I'm told that the VFW would be willing to support this installation at that time. The request was reviewed by the Veterans Agent with the input of the Veterans Committee, and I'm also told that the VFW intends to make a contribution to the visit by the Wall That Heals, which we certainly appreciate. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That brings us to any, old and new business. Mr. Maseri.
Time is winding down, I'm trying to finish up some things, and some of these things will have to continue on with the new board. I, I'm encouraged that two people have signed up to run. I'd like to see a couple more. I think that's in the best interest of the community for those that really want to come up and serve, let everybody know, rather than just sit around for the election to end, what they can do and what their goals are. I think that's important. With respect to, I mentioned, the water sewer, we still have not nailed down a location, aren't we, 28? I mean, we picked a location, but we haven't signed an agreement yet. And hopefully, we will get to, I don't know if you have any further input on that, Michael?
Not, not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. So, other than that, progress is being made on the other objectives, and...
Mr. Schultz?
Hopefully, we can't file the FEIR, I just want to make a point, until we have, we can identify those locations.
The progress seems like it's still moving along, in a positive direction, right? Yes?
On the FEIR?
On the property.
Maybe.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Maseri, you can't leave until the sewer's all done. You go in there, right? I don't think I've, I can't say the last meeting, but the guys on the...
Can I interrupt you one second? Michael, you were talking to our attorney about language in an agreement. Has any progress made on that? Positive or negative?
Yes, some progress, yes.
Some progress, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Oh, no problem.
No problem.
Again, to the board members, Bob, Michael, thank you for your multiple years of service. You guys certainly will be missed. And we had a spirited discussion this weekend on social media about trying to get more candidates to run. The people that have put themselves out there, I applaud that, and I wish there's some more people coming, and I thank the people who have pulled papers, and good luck on the campaign.
Yeah, just to that, to that point, because that was brought to my attention today by a friend of mine, because I haven't really been paying attention to all the dialogue that goes on, that I think people volunteer, I've met volunteers across the board, everywhere in town. This might not be someone's thing, school committee might not be someone's thing, but that doesn't mean that they're not volunteering for some other board, commission, coaching, teaching. People are doing a number of things with their free time. It doesn't necessarily have to be running for office, and there's not, you know, there's a lot of people that volunteer in different capacities, and we've all met them, we all see them on a regular basis. Two of them just sat before us for a lengthy, took the time out tonight for a lengthy hearing to express the difficulties they're experiencing, you know, in the context of a liquor license application. So, I just think people get a little vitriolic with the dialogue, and just should calm down, relax. This, running for a seat might not be everyone's cup of tea, but coaching, you know, or volunteering to teach CCD, or helping out with athletics, or, you know, dance team, or whatever, we meet the, we come across people all the time.
A million ways to get involved.
Absolutely. And the best part of this community is there are so many people volunteering their time to do things to better the community, which includes Mr. and Mrs. O'Leary, who my second part of what I wanted to do is just again extend condolences to them on their loss, and, you know, hope and that, just let them know that we're thinking of them, and our prayers are with them, and hope they get, can make it through, happy memories bring them through this time.
Thank you. Well, I was reading some of the spirited social media comments, you know, you have, I think a lot of the frustration that stems from social media is that you have a tremendous amount of people that voice opinions or provide criticisms without really walking a mile in our shoes, for the people that do coach, and the people that do volunteer, and the people that put their time in to, for the benefit of the community. And it's very easy to provide criticism, and I think there's been a big push to get people to understand, instead of criticize, get involved. You know, have your voice be a positive effect by sitting here. Why don't you go ahead and put your papers in and run an election, and put the time and the commitment into this position, or into other committees, or to coaching, or churches, or whatever it is that benefits your community. But you've seen a tone, and it's not just in North Reading, it's a tone that I'm seeing in a lot of other places. People are, if you don't do something that benefits them, it becomes an issue. I myself have been now given threatening letters to my home, I have continued to get threatening letters to my family, I continue to get anonymous letters about mysterious things about, things that my family and I are doing in town, and it's crazy the amount of negativism that flows around this town, because we make change. We make change what we think is in the best interest of this town to go forward. And I think people have seen this, and they hear about it, and it makes people very concerned. You know, when people start filing unfair labor practices against board members because you have a certain meeting with them, it doesn't set the best tone for the next future people to sit in these chairs. You know, people need to understand that we don't do this volunteering just to take things away from people, or to make people's lives challenging, or to make our employees' lives more difficult. We do it because there's a reason, and we see trends when we sit in these positions, because we are here late at night. Many of us, our cars are parked out in this parking lot, sometimes three, four times a week, because we are involved in the day-to-day things that need to be, or have oversight and insight to allow us to make positive change for sustainability, affordability, and it scares people. And that's what I think the tone, what people have to step back from on social media, is to come and walk a mile in our shoes. It's not easy what we do, and, but Mr. Maseri's been doing this for 15 years, myself nine, you've been doing this now for almost, fall of four, and you're going into your fifth year, you're in your first term, look at the hours it takes. And I've seen positive change, and it's not been easy. Town Administrator's been here, going into your fifth year. You know, you see the amount of effort that these, that board members, not just board members, Conservation Commission, right? All those boards and commissions, pack and wreck. It's, if we don't have that level of commitment going forward from here on, the town will fail. All the hard work and all the money that we've now put in our stabilization account and our capital accounts for the future will go away, get wasted, because we're not doing strategic planning anymore, because we're arguing and fighting, and that's not good. And I think people just need to settle down a little bit and trust that we're not all here just to make people upset. That tone needs to go away. And I won't comment on that anymore, and I don't particularly care anymore about, you know, the personal threats that have come against my family and I. I can live with it, I'm a big boy. I do want to mention to the board, though, a couple of things about capital. We've gone through the process now, that we're in the process of scoring, which I've never done before, and this is a great process, great experience, I'm glad I did it. A couple of things that I just want to mention to the board, you will see, Mr., when the CIPC comes here, and Mr., when Don comes here and presents, you're going to talk about a couple of things that I think that you may not see the full magnitude of. One is the roads, okay? We are far behind on the roads, and we've got to remember, we've gone through three DPW directors in a very short period of time. And I know I'm trying to point blame, but our roads are deteriorating at a rate that we have to catch up. And you know we only have allotted so much money for roads, and I'm going to ask the board to consider seriously finding another $1 million in this operating year, somehow, some way, to jump the roads forward a little bit more, to give our DPW director the resources to go out and do more contracts to extend the paving for this coming, this 2020 CIPC. And you're going to learn more about it, and you're going to understand that even a million dollars, what it does to the factor of our roads is significant. He will be telling you, we're going to need another $5 million, but we know we don't, we can't do that. We just don't have that kind of money. But I certainly think that we need to be at least listening to the CIPC, and listen to this DPW director when we meet on Saturday. I want to have this discussion about the roads. A small investment of an additional million dollars, it's significant in size, but it's small in the whole scheme of things, but it makes such a big change. And, you know, you go down over there where Packard Lane is, and you go down Chow Street, and you go down Salem Street, and you go down all these different roads, you could see the alligator ring, it's getting worse. And if we don't get caught up, it's going to get to a point where you're going to have a lot of vehicle damage, you're going to have a lot of issues in town, and I don't want that.
It'll cost us more of a week, too.
It will. And I've learned a lot. I'm not, you know, I'm a novice in all this, but boy, I've been very educated, and a DPW director is excellent explaining it. He really is, he's done an excellent job, and I give him a lot of credit in the short period of time he's been here. The last thing I want to mention, Mr. Gilberto, I know this is going to be non-traditional on Saturday, but I would like the DPW director to also present to the board pitches of the DPW barn rec room, the break room, the kitchen and sleeping area. It is at a point where I don't think we cannot pay attention to it any longer. I know it's not part of the CIPC, and I'm not saying, you know, we have to upset the CIPC, the process that we, the progress that we made there, but maybe the board just needs to have a full understanding of what it looks like. And, you know, we saw what the fire station looked like in the kitchen in there, and we did the right thing, we invested over $50,000, and we remodified that kitchen, and it needed to be done. Our firefighters deserved a nice, clean environment to work it, and our DPW deserves that as well, and I think we've neglected it.
This is the room where they rest when they're plowing primarily.
Every day.
Yeah.
Like even today, you've had people come in in the morning, at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, the sand roads, and now, here they are, going on their regular hours, and then, now they're here all night, taking trees out of the roads and taking them off lines, and, you know, they're working tremendous amount of hours, but they also need R&amp;R. They need a spot to sit down and decompress and get some rest before their safety, and we cannot provide them an adequate facility. And it's no shot against you, Mr. Gilberto, and it's no shot against this existing DPW director. I just think it's an out of sight, out of mind thing. You've never seen it, right?
No.
I would just like, I think the board should see pitches on Saturday.
Sure.
And we should have a discussion, it should be part of our discussion, because when we make a decision on that budget, we should be thinking about next year. I think this board needs to be prepared, if they make a decision this year, how it may affect next year. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening to my rant.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.